Thank you. You've had this item come before you a couple of times. In both cases, a motion was made but failed to carry. And so it went forward to City Council. At the point of it going to City Council, there were modifications to the plans each time it was remanded to you. It's happened again. There are modifications again, so it's back before the Planning Commission. The modification basically really tries to address the massing issue. And I think that was one of the main issues that the Planning Commission still had as a kind of an outstanding concern of the best way to mask the density on the site. And if it's okay, we can turn over to the applicant. I think a lot of the slides I have are probably the same slides they have, but I think they might be able to explain those changes in a more, in more specific fashion.
Can I just clarify though? It may not matter that much in the end. Did it only go to the City Council the first time or did it go to?
It went both times.
Okay.
They're work meetings besides the actual.
The applicant would like to come forward. Invite him to do so.
Cameron Gunter with PEG Development. You're gonna see me again. Not by my choice. Well, I guess it is by my choice. I could have not done it, but I appreciate the opportunity again to bring back to the Planning Commission that some of the changes that we've made to try to address some of the concerns from the neighborhood, the city, the City Council, the Planning Commission, the City Council. I'll start. The front page here is kind of a breakup of the massing that we've gone back and kind of after meeting with some of the neighbors and looking at some of the concerns on the density and the massing of the building. We have, as you'll see, we've reduced some of the heights on the corner, shrunk that front building a little bit, but I'll get into the site plan. To start off, and we've been through this a couple of times, I think I presented it, but the slide here is as we look at the 2050 vision that has been worked on by the city and those involved with planning. We feel like, and you can read one of these, but there were five objectives that we feel like that it meets the five objectives. Does it meet it? Could there be other ways to meet it? Certainly. But with what we presented and the time that we spent, we tried to address some of these issues with infill developments in Provo City because there's just not a whole lot of room left between the mountains and within the city boundaries for this type of housing. More housing by major employment and close to BYU is another we feel like we hit. High-quality commercial development with landscaped trees and burned around the perimeter. So we feel like we've created that opportunity at this location as well. Next to the Riverwoods Shopping Center, there's a specific one that says "Support Riverwoods", which we feel like this will help support Riverwoods from the standpoint of hopefully being able to transit or to move some stuff around so the theater could potentially be redeveloped into a nicer theater that continues to have the parking there. And then we can move the housing over to this parcel that we're suggesting tonight versus potentially going and coming back on that parcel. If this doesn't pass, the owner of that property would like to probably see us do something there with a little bit higher density. So I know the current property owner doesn't want that to happen because he has some ideas for the theater and we're trying to solve that. So if we go to the next slide, what I wanted to address here is from some of the comments we've heard and even some of the comments from the City Council are, you know, what types of renters are we gonna have in this property and who do we attract? So what we did is we took kind of that median price home in the river bottoms area of $465,000. We said, "What's a mortgage on that?" And you see the mortgage is $3,200, which is a hard mortgage to qualify for the median income. So what I've done, and then our rent, our average rent on the proposed project is gonna be about $1,600 a month by the time you look at your parking and your utility bills. So for somebody to afford the, that rent, it's about a $60,000 a year salary. If you look down with below, we kind of went through and said, "What are some median incomes?" First, we took the millennials in general. It was about $20,000 a year. Median Provo income is the $41,000 and then Utah's $60,000 and the United States is $56,000. So if you take Utah's median income, that's really what would have to, somebody would have to make to qualify for rental in this project. So, and that's just a fact of us having to build a parking underneath and the scale of the apartment we're building. So if we go to the next slide, we kind of took some information that we have and we've gathered. As we look, we do a lot of apartments across the Intermountain West and we're trying to make sure we know what renters are and who's renting, different things in our apartments. And there's, there is a paradigm shift, quite a big shift in homeownership versus what's being rental or being rented. And as you see on that first graph on the age of people who are renting versus, renting now versus who was renting back in 2005. And you'll see as it gets later in the graph into the 50-plus, there's a significant jump between 50 and 75. A little bit of jump 75-plus, but there's a pretty good jump of who's renting in those age brackets. So, which is a different, I mean, it's that baby boomer that's renting. We talk about millennials all the time and what millennials like, but in a lot of our properties, we are seeing those boomers as empty nesters that want to come, come start renting apartments. And you'll see that up at the Ashton up by the University Mall if you just take a sampling of that. And I think I've got it in my appendix, we have some of that as well. So as you see in the 55 and older, that's 42% in 2016 are renting. And then under 55 is at 58%. So a pretty big, a pretty big number of those empty nesters. So what the baby boomers want are, you know, they want to have stores, they want to avoid traffic, they need more flexibility so they can travel, they want convenience, they want, even though they rent, when I say often cheaper, it's cheaper for them from maintaining and then they get their equity back if they've sold their house. We see a lot of that in some of our properties. We have a property in Bountiful where we, actually half of that property out of the 200 units were aged over 55 years old. And it took longer for us to lease up, but once they're in, they're in for a long time. So our average age in that was actually 72 years old. And it was a project that was very, very similar to this, right next to a neighborhood of half-acre to quarter-acre lots. So, and across the street from a shopping grocery store and a Desert Industries and some of those things on Page's Lane and Main Street. If we go to the next slide, so our target market is gonna be that young professional that works out at Qualtrics and Vivint. And I don't know if the letters were shared to you from the Qualtrics chairman and some of the Vivint people that were in support of this project because of that issue. Their concerns and some of their employees would like to have a place down by their work to live with the ability to have the shopping near them. So those young professionals, the young families, we think's a good target market for us. And then once again, that 55 and older group. And we heard George Stewart said he was gonna move in at the council meeting, so we're gonna hold into that. So if we go to the, oh, just something we do as a company to make sure that we have, we have the right tenants and we're managing our properties correctly is we have the financial background check, we have a criminal background check, no illegal occupancy, meaning if you have, whatever the code says, if you have three unrelated people, we're not, we're not gonna tolerate that. And we do those checks often and then we just, we try to verify that they make enough money to make their rent payments. We use that 32% range of what their income is. So if we can go to the next slide. It's kind of our rents comparable to what else is in the market. And you see in a lot of cases, we're at that upper end. And the size, so on the bottom, we have the size of the unit and across the side axis, we have the, how much rent is for that space. So we're that upper tier in every one of those categories from the market around here. And that includes Parkway Lofts, the 63 East Apartments, the Harmon and the Ashton. So next slide. So one of the things that we, that we looked at as a, as an idea, not necessarily as a comparison, but as an idea of what has been approved in the Riverwoods area. Now, there's some differences and I'm not comparing this as an exact project, but the Silverado 196 units that was there north of the Riverwoods seem to make a lot of sense because it's providing the housing and it's providing that mix of use to both the Riverwoods and the employment. That ended up not getting built. And my understanding, it may not. Qualtrics, I believe, owns it or has some kind of interest in it. And so as we looked at it, saying, "Look, there was some reason to allow apartments and some density there." So with that not going, then it would seem to make sense to us that the concept still works to allow density and to help support the retail and bring people by the retail and also provide housing for the companies that are down there. Now, the downside to ours, which we understand, is that we're, we have a neighborhood around the one side of us versus that didn't have any residential homes. So don't, please don't take that I'm comparing this, these straight across the board. My, my point is, is there seem to be enough support to have housing in the, in that area that we would think that this has some traction with some of the changes that we've made to the massing of the, of the property. So if we can go to the next slide, we can talk about the site plan a little bit. Well, probably more than a little bit. But what we did is we went back, we heard some comments about, "Well, why don't, why don't you reduce density, right?" So we went back and said, "Look, let's, let's spread the density out a little bit." And I think we heard from even the Planning Commission about, "Why do you have single-family homes and all of a sudden big density?" So we went back to one of our original plans and said, "What can we do? Let's put six fourplexes along 4750. Keep it the same height, make, get our setbacks so they're equal to what the, or even greater than what the single-family homes were on that block. Limit them to the, to the same height in that LDR zone." And then on top of that, we said, "We won't have any traffic that comes or any entrances for vehicular access along 4750. All of our entrances and the garages will be on the backside and they'll have to enter through the site off of Edgewood or the road at the back." So what that does is it spread our density out. We did reduce density by about eight units. This went to 242 units, which was, all the buildings up front were three stories, no taller than the 40 feet. And then on the corner, we also did some other modifications that reduced the height along University Avenue to two stories. And as you saw in the rendering we had, it has some variation of heights, which makes it so it's not as big and as massive. We still had the breakup of what we call the H shape a little bit there. We've now defined what the amenity space is gonna be and provided that amenity space. That reduces quite a few units as well. And so we put the, and then on 4750 are the fourplexes. So that was what we brought to the City Council as an option. They asked us to come back to the Planning Commission. They wanted to continue the public hearing. They wanted to get input from the Planning Commission. We also were asked to go back to the neighborhood because they didn't get a chance to really study what we proposed. And so we had another meeting with the, with the neighborhood and we got some feedback that was also not, there was some positive stuff, there was some stuff that not so positive. And there's some suggested changes that, that we looked at and could potentially consider. So as we, so this is what was presented. This was presented to the neighborhood. And so what, what we did is now we're presenting it here. What, if we go to the next slide, so this is the design, updated design as we look at it from, so 4800, the top image is the 4800 view looking to the south. You see how we got the three stories and it varies on, on either end, it drops to two stories. You've got the bird's eye view from the corner, looking through the property on the bottom left and then more of a street level looking into the property at that same corner. So these are, these are massing models. These are not, the materials are not the right materials, so we're, you know, we'll work through the materials and go through Design Committee for all of that and do the development plan. But what this is to show is the massing and what it looks like. So you'll see that there's quite a bit of open space in this. And so if you, if you go to the next slide, green space, we have, well, green space and parking, it's 40%. So 40% of the parking is underground, which allows us to have more green space up above. So it doesn't make it feel like it's just a row of houses. It's just all, it's tight and it's a large mass. With us providing the amenities onsite, there'll be quite a few different amenity spaces. We'll have indoor amenities, outdoor amenities, a dog park. The other thing that we've started to do on a lot of our properties is Uber and the grocery deliveries, we've worked out some contracts with them. So they'll deliver groceries at a complex of this size and they'll just, the people, we have two different groups that'll do that. And the residents will just put their grocery order in and they'll, it'll be delivered onsite. And it's, it's been very popular at some of our other properties. So we'll be able to implement that at this property. And then just the access to the Riverwoods Shopping Center is a benefit. We believe there's less traffic to 4750 because all the townhomes will be entering through the property, through Edgewood and not up 4750. So the positive thing is less traffic on 4750. The downside is more density on 4750. And so as we looked at using Provo City's ITE trip generation for the eight single-family homes, we came up with 178 trips a day on 4750 if they entered off of 4750 to their garages. If we did the 24 townhomes with, with front entrances off 4750, it's 282 trips a day. But with us being alley-loaded, the, it's saying, and we think there's still gonna be trips on 4750 even with it alley-loaded because of people visiting. But the, based on the code and the standard, it would be zero on 4750 because of their access and their traffic in the back. So in reality, we think there's, there would be traffic on 4750 from guests. So, but it'll be substantially less than the 178 that were single-family homes. So from a parking standpoint, we have more than necessary based on code. This shows 414 stalls, which is, which is over what is required under the current city ordinance. So, you know, I talked about earlier, the movie theater, one of the reasons that we think this is a benefit to the community is there's an opportunity for that movie theater to get revitalized and be an opportunity for the current property owner that owns the Riverwood to help revitalize that center. And as we look at centers across the country, and I don't know if anybody saw the Desert News or the Salt Lake Tribune this week about South Town where they're doing a major revamp and their revamp is coming from entertainment. And we see this across the country where in order for malls to be viable, they need that entertainment component. And that's what's happening because bricks and mortar is shrinking. Bricks, the retail bricks and mortar is shrinking. And if they have the entertainment component, people coming by, they have that impulse buying, right? As they're, as they're shopping, as they're eating, their impulse buying as well as being entertained. So we're seeing a lot of that across the country. So if you go to the next slide, what, what this is showing here with on the current plan is a 69% of the site will be open space because of, we have underground parking. Underground parking is expensive. It just costs us a lot of money right now, especially to do that underground parking. But we think it's a benefit not only to the, to the residents there in the project, but also we think it's a benefit to do clustering. Clustering creates open space and it creates less mass versus having rows of houses where you have a garage you pull up into and you have parking on the street. So we think from a massing standpoint, from that density side, that this is a much better proposal than if we kept it to a lot less dense property and didn't have any underground parking. And so now, from a density standpoint of people, that, that this doesn't, it's not better because there's more, there's more homes and there's more apartments. So there's two sides of density. One is massing and the size and then there's the other is people, right? Which caused some traffic issues and some of the other things. But if we'll go to the next, next slide, go one more. So after hearing some of comments back, we got a couple of people calling us and having some discussions, one of the things that we would be willing to do as an option for not just the Planning Commission, but also the City Council is, one, proceed forward and let the Planning Commission vote on the Option A, which is what I just presented to you. Or take an Option B, which takes the eight single-family homes that we presented last time along 4750 and leaving those in place and then taking the 242 units that we had on the, on the more dense property and reducing it to 230, but not changing any of the, the massing along 4800 or 4750. So we'll still have the steps and everything. So for us to gain the additional units, we'd have to put them on the backs and we can't, we can't go against some of the spacing between buildings and the height. So we won't be able to go more than the three stories that we had proposed. So, so there won't be any townhomes, the single-family lots would be back in, the eight single-family homes. Access to 4750, those 40, those eight homes would have access now on 4750 versus the 24 plexes wouldn't have had any access off of 47, 4750. So that would be, and we have the text that we've submitted to staff that has both of those changes to them. So if you want to go to the next slide, I think I've got, well, let's go to the next one. That was just the Ashton, that's some information on. Keep going, sorry. So this, if you look at, if you, if you'll take the left side that says the 242 and the eight lots, it would be the eight lots there replacing the 24 plex, or the 24 units along 4750 with that similar massing on the, on the front side. What we'll have to do is figure out that the kind of the U shape or the seven may have to get a little bit bigger or a little bit longer to make that work, but we'll, we'll stick to the 230. And if we can't get 230, it, it comes down. So it could potentially be 224. We just hadn't had enough time to do a full study to make sure we're not doing something that, that looks bad. So, so that's my presentation. There's more slides, but I mean, that, that's really the gist of what we're presenting tonight, asking for a recommendation that we can go to the City Council for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Johnson?
I just have one. The townhomes, I noticed the parcel line is divided from the apartment portion of your site. Are those going to be for sale or for rent?
They would be part of the rent. I think that line was just to show we, how we calculated acreages and where that line drew. Because I think we're seven-point something makers on the, that one side, on the upper side and I can't remember our acreage on the bottom. We were just trying to figure out the acreage on the top.
Mr. Smith?
Chair. The, the townhomes, there are six of them and then there's four per, per building.
Correct.
How are those divided up? How are they, what do they look like as far as entrances and that kind of thing?
So you'll have, there'll be an entrance out of, off the front, but the garages will be on the back. So it'll be a two-story with a front stoop out to 4750 with garage, with all the garage access in the back.
They look like row townhomes.
Okay. So each unit has its own front door and stoop?
Stoop.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Invite the neighborhood chair from the River Bottoms neighborhood to come forward.
Good evening again. It's good to meet with you guys. We appreciate the opportunity as a neighbor to express our opinions. We are grateful for the developers, for the efforts that they have made in trying to address the issues of massing. We think they've made some, some good attempts there. As a neighborhood, we've tried to look at some of the benefits of this development as, as well as our concerns. And there's been a little bit of change in the voting. We've, we've recommended that. I've sent a letter that I think you've received copies of that have indicated what that is. And that's a little bit of a change from what we had before that was more in the 85, 88% against the development, down to a 53% that wish to keep it as it is, low-density residential housing under the current zoning, with about 10% that are willing to look for an intermediary but desire that the single-family homes remain. So based on that offer being given by the developers this evening, if we were to look at Plan B and take that 10% and add it to those that were in favor of the latest townhomes and the softening of the density of 38%, depending on which way these developers go, whether it's single-family or townhomes, that 9% middle ground will swing one way or the other. And it'll either swing against it, being against the townhomes, or it'll swing for the apartments with the single-family residentials on there. And you can do the math on that. I think the, the Planning Commission has heard many of the concerns that we have as a neighborhood. 4750 neighbors with the townhomes will be impacted. In our last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the impact on these particular single-family residents with- residents with the townhomes across the street. They're very concerned about traffic through their, through their street, access to it and onto University Avenue, and the impact that that would make to them. And we need to consider that, and we appreciate PEG that has been willing to back in and relook at what's being considered. There were some other issues that were brought out of our last meeting that I think it's important that we look at and that the planning commission consider. One of the concerns that was brought up is that, and it's been used as a benefit for having these apartments in this particular areas, is that will benefit the Riverwoods Mall, that will allow the mall to get a hold of the movie complex, to remodel it, to redo it, to bring people back into that area, which revitalizes their mall area. Well, at the last meeting, there was a question raised whether they can really retain or get the proper franchise that they need to draw, the types of movies and the things that they want. That's concerning to the neighbors, because if that doesn't happen, what are the mall owners who now have this piece of property going to do? It's zoned high-density, and very likely they would put high-density apartments. So now we have apartments on the south side of 4800 and apartments on, inside the mall, which we now add to that density. Further looking at the area, north of the mall area, north of the business complex, there is planned for a lot of apartments. Some of those things are on hold right now, but the future plans are for additional apartments in the area. Now suddenly, we have the potential to impact the northern part of the River Bottoms area substantially. I think we as individuals need to look at, is the immediacy of this particular development overruling good judgment? Does the city have proper infrastructure and planning to handle that kind of structure in this area? If not, I think we need to step back and take a look at it and say, what is the overall plan for this area? What will happen to this area if we suddenly add five, 600 apartments into the area, into a very, very small area basically, as it enters the Provo between University Avenue and the Provo River? We as residents have the responsibility, and you as city leaders have the responsibility to look at those kinds of aspects and the impact that they may have. And we ask you that you consider those in addition to what the developers are proposing. There are limited areas for single-family homes in the River Bottoms area. This 4800 north property is one of those, at least portion of that, would facilitate single-family homes. We recognize that there are spots along 4800 and University that may be suspect to single-family homes. However, we have several subdivisions. Deerfield Cove that is selling out very quickly right along University Avenue. So there is a potential for single-family homes in that particular area. So as you consider your important role, we ask you to look at the future. What is it going to bring? Mr. Smith brought up in our last meeting that the areas should each take their fair share of the apartments in the high-density in the area. I thought about that, and we could see 600-plus apartments. Is that more than a fair share for that particular area that has been designated as residential? So thank you for your consideration. We again thank PEG for their willingness to continue to listen to the neighbors and strive to provide options for us. And if you have any questions, I'm open to those.
I have one question for you, Mr. Rosen. Thanks for being here and for articulating yourself as clearly as you have. Just as I've seen the different kind of versions of the project plan come along, even though we're not technically hearing, you know, a proposal for the project plan right now, that each of these requests for an ordinance amendment has come along with what they might do on the land. At any point, has the neighborhood been favorable to kind of higher density or in higher kind of height on the, on the University Ave portion of this site, and then kind of maybe substantially lowering as it gets back closer to the neighborhood? I mean, I must admit that I'm not in love with the, with the kind of the massing as it is right now and the kind of what it looks like. And I much, I actually much prefer the building from the very first plan on the, on the, on the University side of things, you know, the building that would face, you know, that would be on the west side of University facing University, and then kind of stepping back down. I've just, you know, I know that a lot of the concern has been about density, but also a lot of the concern has been about where the density is exactly. So i- is there any way to characterize some of the conversations you've had, or has that not really entered the conversation?
No, it has, it has entered a lot, and that's why there's been a lot of softening of that University and 4800 corner, down to two stories and three stories. Originally, the buildings were four and five stories, and then there were three stories on two of the buildings and four, and then that switched and moved the four-story over by the river and the businesses. Those all were some suggestions that came from the neighbors. They prefer that the lower massing be on that corner of 4800 as the people come in and the entrance into Provo City, that it fits more in line with some open space around it, and a setback from University and 4800 that gives it more of the feel of the business district and the Riverwoods Mall, not so cramped and looking like an Orem State Street right on University and 4800. So the developers have looked at that and have reduced the size of that, have reduced the height of that building, and reduced the overall heights of all of the buildings to three stories. We appreciate that. Some of those middle ground that the people were looking at with single-family residents along 4750 were to keep the apartments in the 225 range, where they're proposing 230 range. That's fairly close to that kind of middle ground. It keeps the building softened, allows some corners to be two stories and step up. It gives more of a form factor and a fitting that fits in with the area more than the Costco-type apartments or the Orem Boulevard-type apartments that comes right off the road and straight up for three and four stories. We, we're very much against those kinds of things.
Okay, so you're far, again, that seems really counterintuitive to me, but I can understand where you're coming from rather than, so you want more of a consistent look that really, from the very beginning, sets a particular aesthetic tone rather than thinking about where you put, you know, having fewer people closer to what are currently single-family homes, you want it more consistent throughout?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, that just seems, again, that seems counterintuitive to me, but understand the logic that you're, you're coming from. Any other questions for Mr. Rosen?
Again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there are any other neighborhood chairs present who wish to speak to this item, invite you to come forward. Okay, there are no neighborhood chairs. Invite anyone from the public who wishes to speak. I don't know if we have our timer up or not, but we're typically try to keep it to under three minutes. And again, we, given that we've heard maybe before, that's certainly no reason to be heard, not to be heard again, but...
Don't start the timer on me yet, I want to slide up, please. My name's Ben Markham. I'm a River Bottoms neighbor. I'm also a member of the Transportation and Mobility Advisory Committee. I wish I could speak on behalf of that whole committee, but I was unable to get a quorum of the committee together to talk about what I'm going to say, so I have some input from some members of that committee, but I think it's relevant. There is, on Provo City Code, the top paragraph you see here, this is typical for cities throughout the country, that basically says, if you have more than 250 trips a day on a given street in development, you need two access points. My concern about the option B, putting eight more homes on a street that already has 10 homes on it, is you probably go over the 250 level. Little bit, maybe not enough to worry about, but I worry about that kind of thing. The stuff at the bottom shows how Provo trip counts are calculated, and what it basically says, you can go do the arithmetic, is if you've got 14 or 15 homes typically on a street, you need two access points. You now have 10, option B would add eight. From a Transportation and Mobility Committee thing, we don't like exceptions to the codes that we have. We'd like to try to live within the guidelines that we think makes sense. The other concern related to this is the Green Acres subdivision, the 10 lots that exist on 4750 is mature. I want to be nice, it's not, you know, it's there for a while, but the probability of some of those one-acre lots selling to a developer over the next 10 or 15 years is very high, and then they come in with R110, even 3.4 to the acre, there'll be a fair number growing. Now, slide has gone up now where you can see, and I want to point out a couple of things. Oh, good, you covered my timer, thank you. This is the project area that'd be, you know, either townhomes or eight more houses there. This deep area back here, it's nine-plus acres or 10 lots that belong to the Green Acres subdivision. There are 10 homes on there. There are also a number of other buildings. It appears to me that there's almost a light industry enclave that goes there. This starts the North Gate subdivision. So any development that happens here is locked into 4750, or, and this is what the point I want to make, I believe this project should leave a place where you can make a connection to, this is Edgewood Drive up here, this is a stoplight by Macaroni Grill. I'm out. Let me just, throw me out if you want to, but I'd like to make the point that there needs to be the ability to connect that, so there'll be a second access for potential ultimate development. Go south for me if you could, down, move the, yeah. This is the North Gate subdivision, which is 45 lots, beautiful subdivision. Its only access is out here, come on down now, please. It wraps around and then goes out 4400 north where there is a light. So that's 45 homes, single access, which is not in compliance, it was built before the code, all right? The point that I want to bring up is there's about 10 acres here, Provo Canyon School, a facility that's mature, very mature, and it is likely that the property value will exceed the value of the school, and there'll be a time when the developers, when the owners of this, as a corporation owns 300 of these things, will sell and that'll be developed. And again, the only access is this little one right here. Last point, this three acres is owned by the LDS Church with a relatively soon plan to put a building there. When they develop this apple orchard, it's in development right now, it's the one they referred to as Deerfield Cove, 14 single-family homes. The developer tried to buy or trade the church for this so they could run all the way through between 4200 and 4400. Church came back and said, no, we need it too soon, so we don't know when, but, and again, the only access on that will be off University in here to 4400. So we're piling up a lot of stuff on 4400, and I just believe that we need to think about that kind of traffic issue as we're making decisions. Relevant to tonight, I think we ought to make sure there's some kind of way, once the Green Acres area might develop with higher count of homes, to have passage through this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
We live on 4750 north, and we moved there less than a year ago, so I do not have any plans for development. The neighbors on 4750 are adamantly opposed to four plexes. We feel like it won't lend to our neighborhood feel, and there would be no transition to the massive housing across the street. And the neighbors aren't opposed to development, but I think the key is appropriate development. And it was the first time that I heard mention tonight that the fellow from California may consider developing the movie theater into apartments. And so, I don't think we have to choose between option A or B if there's an option C. I think that would provide high-density housing in an area that's appropriate. Riverwoods would benefit from the people that would move there. PEG Development would have a project that they would get paid for. The fellow from California gets his money, and the city gets their money from taxes, and the neighbors are happy. So I would encourage a win-win solution and consider other options, especially as I've heard tonight, with other options even further north of 4800. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jordan McCormick. Up until a year and a half ago, I lived on 4750 north, and we were there for about eight years, so we lived in my father-in-law's home, my wife and kids and I. And my father-in-law was one of the original developers of Green Acres with, along with Jim O'Rand back here. My father-in-law is unable to make it here, but he sent us a text message that when they developed that, it was unincorporated Utah County. It wasn't part of the city of Provo. And this is what he says, is, "Our relationship with, as neighbors with the city is like a marriage. Provo proposed to us as neighbors that we allow annexation. They made promises that we would remain a low-density neighborhood in exchange for our agreement to annex. Our agreement was with the city in good faith, not the commissioners in office. We expect them to keep their word like we have kept ours." This is a beautiful area, and not just with the river going there, but also proximity to the canyon. My wife and I looked in earnest to stay in that area, and unfortunately, we, due to housing prices and lack of availability, we relocated to Orem. But with what is being proposed, Provo has no shortage of high-density housing throughout its city limits. What it lacks is the ability to grow a family and stay. What's being proposed is people that aren't, Provo's going to lose good, solid citizens. People with apartment complexes are transient. Trust me, I was in the elders' corn presidency, tried to do home teaching routes with condos in your ward. It's obsolete the second that you hit print on the assignments, trust me. It's constant turnover, and just as somebody like, we would love to move back to Provo, we loved this area, it was ideal, just we couldn't find a place to purchase, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Markham. The first thing I want to do is thank you for your time and your service to our city. I feel like parts of our city are failing, and it's kind of got a dismal feeling to it in certain areas. When I walk through the Riverwoods Mall, there are a lot of shops that have been closed for a long time. Office buildings nearby, I've read letters from office building owners who are having trouble filling their office space. Restaurants don't always close, but they move to places where there's more traffic, and this is very evident in the River Bottoms. Instead of delaying what we have here with PEG developers, we have a reputable builder. What's happened is he's been stalled, obstacles have been put in his way. Instead of saying, how quickly can you build this, how large can it be, we need this, it's how small can you build it? And it feels like a small voice is getting a lot of attention. Where I live in River Bottoms, and I see a lot of problems and a lot of issues, and I feel like this development can be a solution. I feel like Provo needs to be embracing vertical growth. If we want to have walkable cities, we need this type of housing. People are changing, values are changing, and people want to rent all over the country. This is a good thing, this is not a bad thing. And I would like to see Provo facilitating walkable communities that are very friendly and open, and I just couldn't be more strongly in favor of this development, even larger. And when I go up the canyon, I want to see a beautiful development with nice, friendly people who are employed and work and eat nearby. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to rise until after last couple of comments, but my name is Ken Richardson, I live in the River Bottoms neighborhood, and I just rise in strong support of single-family homes whenever they're possible. And I just don't think it's fair to the Green Acres neighborhood to, to change the nature of their neighborhood in such a drastic way. Townhomes, that's a wall, and it's a wall right up against the street. And they said, well, we'll park in the back, well, that brings the townhome closer to the road. I have a home that unfortunately, far enough, far away from the road, but even then, if you were to say that you're going to put townhomes immediately across the street, that's a wall. And I don't think that that's fair to that neighborhood. It is a beautiful neighborhood, I think that we should be supporting single-family homes in that part of Provo, and I don't see any support for that in any of the developments that I've seen, that are all high-density. There's plenty of high-density housing that's built and planned for North Provo. I, I disagree with the recent comments that we don't have enough. We need single-family homes. And so that's my, that's my opinion, my observation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Paul Harden, I also live on forty-seven fifty north. I'm really conflicted over this. I, by nature, I'm for the city, I want to see what's best for the whole community. And in some regards, the higher-density housing would be helpful for the city and its growth. At the same time, I don't, I want to keep the residential feel of my street. And so for me, and for our, my neighbors at least, if this construction goes forward, then we would, we're very strongly in favor of having single-family residences across the street. That would help maintain the neighborhood feel. We could actually get to know our neighbors. It would increase the traffic, but only as much as a normal city neighborhood street would have. I think that's it. But we're greatly in favor of the residences instead of the townhomes.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Stacy Tucker. I live on forty-seven fifty north, and I would like to express my appreciation to you and the efforts that you put forth in our behalf, serving on the planning commission. Just a few things I want to address, I've lived on my street for twenty-nine years, and Mr. Markham's remarks about the increased housing, you know, if we had the eight additional single houses across the street. I just want to point out that at one point, we had eight additional houses across the street before they were demolished because of the former project that was gonna go in. We never had any traffic issues on my street with those additional eight homes present. And so I just, I wanted to spell that as a concern, by putting in eight single homes. Our concern as neighbors on that street with townhomes facing our street is that, while they're accessed from the rear, there's only a twenty-foot setback. And I believe human nature is such that people would very easily parallel park across the road, or, excuse me, park in front of their townhomes to go in and out of their townhomes that way. And I think a lot of you also would recognize the fact that many rental places, because these will be rentals, use their garages for storage, even though there's going to be garages available. I fear that they would be used as storage space, and again, that would emphasize the need to park in front of their townhomes. Also, in regards to the shops at Riverwoods, while I think it's a beautiful shopping area, and we love to go there on and off for holiday and special events that they have there, considering that you have surrounding the shops at Riverwoods currently, you've got Arbers, Canyon Brook, Villages at Riverwoods, Georgetown, those are all condo complexes. Then you have Vintage, Stonegate, North Gate, My Street, and then of course, residential areas south of us. The primary reason I believe that shops aren't frequented at Riverwoods are lack of parking and poor retail selection. And putting a two-hundred-and-forty-two apartment complex unit across the street from the shops at Riverwoods is aren't really going to be the thing that solves what may ail the shops at Riverwoods. So I would like you to consider that as well. My concern also with what Gunter, or Cameron Gunter said, with the average rental being sixteen hundred dollars a month, that is really steep. I've been in touch with Aston Apartments up by Costco, their median apartment rate is eleven hundred and sixty-four dollars, that's for one and two-bedroom apartment units. And so I am concerned that at sixteen hundred dollars a month rent, that is quite steep. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Tucker, fifty-one West, forty-seven fifty north. My family benefited from having a couple of projects come into Provo City. And our representative met with Cynthia Dayton at the time, and she told us, single-family homes around Tempehue, one hundred east, twin homes farther south away from Tempehue, professional office, and the neighborhood would like a walking path along these side of our property. And so, we thought about it, and that's what we did. And I would put forth the idea, that's how you work with a neighborhood. In the beginning, when the first meeting was held with Peg Development, the proposal was five stories, high-density rentals. Now we've got it down to three stories, still looking at high-density, still looking at rentals. And I find that, well, you guys probably picked this up, the people that are in favor of this project, well, none of them live by it. The Vivid owner, he lives on a golf course. Peg Development, lives in Spanish Fork. Gentleman from Vintage, no, not Vintage, Stonegate, brand-new project right by his, where he lives, with single-family homes. Now, I'm not saying that it has to be single-family homes. I'm certainly okay with what was approved in the previous zone, and I realize that my view is not protected, along with life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I may lose my view, and we may not have, well, I don't, obviously, single-family homes across the entire nine acres does not make sense. I, I accept that. But I also believe that bringing in nine acres of high-density rentals has not helped the neighborhood or taken in our concerns at all. And if there's anybody in the valley that could maybe not make top dollar off their property and still get by in life, it would be Mr. Roney. He could maybe tone this down a little bit, so it's not so, well, you know what it is, I don't know what it is. But anyway, those are my thoughts. I would ask you to, to have Peg Development and Mr. Roney go back and, and tone it down. Nine acres of rentals, I think is just too much, all in one area. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public before we turn it back to the commission?
Hi, my name's Dave Seese, you all know me. I'm speaking for myself, not anybody else, just so you know, for the record. The scariest part about this is that common sense and most of the neighbors who've been, you know, in this process from the beginning, have, common sense would tell you that you would go from single-family home, you would gradually go up to a shopping center, up to high-density. We all know that's not what we're doing here, and we know the reason why. And it's kind of interesting, from the very first time we had these meetings, George Stewart, who were bragging about wanting to live in here, you know, his answer was, we need to support the shopping center, we need, they're gonna build a cinema. And this, this is our duty. And so, we kind of opposed it, and, and there's nobody here that wants single-family homes on there, really. Everybody knows that, that this is kind of a transition piece, and yet we're going up, okay? And, excuse the pun, but, you know, all the shaving of the carving of the sides, we're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, my joke for the night. But the scary part about this is, is that our last neighborhood meeting, when all of the last almost year, we were told that our duty is to help the shopping center, help the cinema, we're gonna get this great cinema, we're gonna get all these great things if we sacrifice this piece of land and go up like this, instead of what common sense tells you. Then, it wasn't a question that was raised last week, it was Gary Winterton, our own city councilman, who, when we had ninety percent of the people saying, we opposed to this, said, I want to hear it, I'm voting in favor of it. Gary, you represent us. He's going, ah, we need help because we want the cinema. Okay, so he stands up in front of our last neighborhood meeting, and he says, oh, by the way, now that he sees people are starting to kind of change their opinion because they're afraid of voting against, well, I'm not gonna name the names of people that are involved in this, and city council who are not really listening, and they're going, okay, let's just take this, because if we don't get this, we might get something worse? So we'll concede. That's why you're seeing the votes going down, is because people are just going, people are coming to me going, I'm gonna vote in favor, I go, why? I'm, I'm fine, but why? Because I'm afraid of, well, this never wins, so we may as well accept this. So Gary Winterton stands up in front of our last neighborhood meeting, and he says, guys, hey, look, we may not get this cinema, okay? I just want you to know, I'm backpedaling a little bit, this cinema, it happened, we raised our question, well, if we don't get cinema, what do we get? Well, you're probably gonna get high-density apartments, more of them. That's the scary thought. And then Cameron today reiterated the same thing, hey, we just want you to know, we kind of like sold you on this and got you on board, but now, we might be in bed with the Ronys again, and we might go straight up. Now, you go from here to here, and so I'll ask the question, Mr. Smith, you're the one that told us that we need to do our fair share. At what point is our fair share? Okay? Because what I see in the future is going from here, high-density, which honestly, before my time's up, I would just like to tell you, that one-hundred-and-thirty-five units per acre Canyon Brook fits perfectly here. Underground parking, you can't see the cars, green space, and all that sort of stuff. But what I fear, from based upon the comments that we're hearing now, is that everything north, going from, from this side of the street to the canyon, to Provo Canyon, is gonna be four, five-story multifamily units, and/or high office buildings. And I ask you the question, does that scare you? Is that really what we want for North Provo? We will have done more than our fair share at that point. All I were asking for is common sense, gradual planning, and I think that if, if the proposal came in at Canyon Brook-type things, you'd get a hundred percent support.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, I understand that your jobs are very difficult in weighing all the needs and seeing through all the slants in the presentations that you've been given. A short story, when I went to buy my house, before I bought it, and my name's Janet Low, and I live at forty-five fifteen North Gate Drive, I went to the planning commission, or the development office here in Provo, and I said, okay, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that I am pretty close to bordered by two major streets, or what's gonna become a major street. I think Orem Center Street had just opened up and connected to forty-eight hundred north, or it was just announced that it was going to be. I said, what's gonna happen to this property? I was not treated very respectfully, primarily, I think, because I was a woman asking the question, instead of a man who might know something. But, what I was told is, look at the planning and zoning, it's not gonna change because there is well-established single-family homes in the area. And I looked at the head, planning and zoning person, and said, and said, truly, you know, they're old, some of the statements that your traffic and engineering people have said today, how can I be assured it's not gonna change to go directly from single-family home, because I've moved from busy streets before? I've moved from that, and I want to raise my family somewhere different from where I've moved from, I want the feeling that's here. So, with that assurance, you know, I did buy, and I'm investing, and have invested in the city, you know, for thirty years. And the idea that single-family homes are gonna be the longer-term volunteers in your community, the primary voters in your community, the supporters for all of that, that is a valid point that, to consider here. And I believe that most of us understand that the major part of that property needs to be more than single-family housing. But again, half of what is on there would be about MIMAX, because again, you do it gradually, you don't go to four, and, you know, three, four, and five stories, where your backyards are no longer personal, what you do is no longer personal, you're everyone else's entertainment. And again, the idea that more will be coming north, that's fine with us. But when you put all of that in that one area, hearing about the sewer problems, hearing about those other issues, just the infrastructure, please be considerate, it's a traffic jam at five o'clock there now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Bingham. I didn't come here tonight to speak about this issue, but as I'm hearing comments, I, I would like to share my point of view. I live in the downtown neighborhood, and I live in the downtown neighborhood because I like the walkability, I like, I like the variety, the different housing types. I don't necessarily like all of the rentals that I live around, but I see their purpose, for sure. I, as I hear the residents from this area, they moved to this area for the reason, you know, that it's, they're single-family homes, there is the stability, quieter streets, et cetera. And that's, I, I feel like this area should be preserved. Keep that character in that area. There are, yeah, that's, that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jane Loftus, Georgetown on the Park. I've lived there for twelve years now. I moved there from Wyemount, high-density, and I was a single mom, and I had two teenage sons, who are now millennials, who chose to buy elsewhere because there was nowhere to buy round about where we lived. They are successful, they're good young men, but they couldn't buy in Provo. I spoke with John Curtis, and I said, can we not get some more places, apartments, townhomes, whatever, where our young people can buy, stay in Provo, and contribute to our society here, to our city? And, you know, John is our neighbor, and I guess we're going more towards the rentals. But as I say, we are losing people. We would be better putting a Walmart where that cinema is, not that I'm advocating it, I, I do like the pickup service, but if we are going to have two high rental, or high-density rental buildings in communities in that neighborhood, it is gonna be jam-packed, it is not gonna be fun, and it will not help the Riverwoods. I've been over there two or three times in the last week, and I could not park. I went to pick up Costa Vida, couldn't park. I, I went over to go to Gymboree, couldn't park. And that's already, and that's, you know, I'm trying to use it to support my city, and I'm not able to. I appreciate all the work you do, I know you have hard decisions to make, I'd like you to look at, at our millen, sorry, millennials, who would like to buy in Provo. It's a great city, we love it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Sparks. I grew up on forty-seven fifty north, still Still go there. My family owns the house next to the river at the end of 4750, where my dad developed this area and got it part of the city to benefit us all, with Jim O'Rand being promised that it would remain low-density. And the promises that the city has made to us, as well as nothing going over 35 feet, is being thrown into the wind, as if crusaders are coming in and taking over with no care for anybody around, and wanting to build things. Yes, they've toned it down from 50 feet high, but really, the people that own the land can afford, they're already paying enough taxes. You guys will get the tax money from all the things, as well as the new developments north of 4800. And it, people moved to this neighborhood for the feeling of walkability, to get to know everybody. I know almost every face in this room, because I grew up there, and you get to walk the streets. That's what people bought for. And you know your neighbors. Once you start putting in these high-density places with 200 people and all the additional cars, you won't know anybody. They're always going to be changing. It won't be additional tax dollars for the people, or, as has been said, continuity, people voting and benefiting. It's just going to be constant change. And we need a continual stronghold of people that benefit the community. And it's a beautiful area. Let's keep it that way. Let's not turn this into the district, or all the areas up in Salt Lake that have these ugly buildings that are just square and fish out of water. This is a beautiful area of homes, and we can keep the continuity, as you see with the schools that are still pretty on the east side of University Avenue. It's pretty, and this isn't. And that's why people live here, for the family values, and that's all going to go out the door as a crusader coming in, taking over.
Thank you.
My name is Bev Christensen. I live in the Northgate neighborhood. I've lived there for 29 and a half years. And we love our neighborhood. We love being able to know our neighbors. We have so many people who come in and say, "This is just such a different neighborhood. It has such a different feeling." And of course, our church ward, everyone knows each other and has such a good feeling. And we would just like, we feel like this is a small area, nine acres, which is south of 4800 North. There's a lot more land on the north side of 4800 North that has the potential to be developed for multifamily units. And so, why not let this seven and a half or nine acres just stay as single-family homes? We've known so many people who would love to live in that area if they could buy a home in that area. We have people coming in all the time saying, "Please let us know if you have a home for sale in this neighborhood. We really would love to live in this area, but there just aren't any homes for sale." And so, if we could just keep that zone the way it is, and have it be a neighborhood of single-family homes with some congruity, and let all of the multi-housing units be on the north side, that would help us a lot and benefit our neighborhood, I believe.
Thank you.
My name's Christopher Gureas. I live up on Canyon Road, just above Canyon Brook condominiums. I own a couple of them in that area. I also know that we're hard pushed to get $1,000 to $1,100 a month rent out of those units. Been longtime resident of Provo. Grew up originally in the old Flower Basket Home down on University Avenue. We moved out into the Sticks, which was before the BYU football stadium was in. And that was considered the edge of Provo. Now, I know the controversy in my neighborhood up there with the MTC. I'm sure you guys and ladies have heard about all the controversy with the up and downs with the new MTC. I can just say aesthetically, I can see the natural divisions here. You've got the hillside, and see Canyon Brook and the arbers up there. It works because of the hillside. You've got natural barriers with the river. Here, you've got a residential area, and trying to go aesthetically higher is not visible, visibly pleasing to the eye. I think it'd be wise if the council would take the time. I have relatives that live, or relations to my father, or father-in-law, yeah, my son, that lives on 4750. I think you need to take the time personally to drive the street, and ask yourself, if you owned residency on that street, would you permit that? Or would you be standing in my position, or their position, asking, "Is this acceptable?" And I think with all honesty, you can accept that. I know you'd be standing here voicing the same concerns. And that, my feelings, because I see the development movement, movement going to north, up to Canyon Road, which is okay, but I think it needs to be aesthetically pleasing to the environment and the people that live there. Thank you.
Further public comment on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment and return discussion to the applicant. Mr. Gunther, if he wishes to respond in any way to any of the public comment, invited to do so, and then we'll return conversation to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Cameron Gunther, again, for the record. I just want to clarify a couple of things that I heard that, I don't think they're accurate, but first of all, let me clarify that the comment about me saying that we're going to, if this gets approved, that we're going to go ahead and develop that theater property, is not accurate. The reason we're even on this property is because the landowner that owns the movie theater is a partner of ours, and an acquaintance of mine out of California. He approached us. He wants to build apartments in Provo. He likes apartments versus the movie theater, because that Mr. Roni, or the property owner, would like that theater. I said, "Okay, let's do that." But, and then as we, as I knew that the current property owner wanted to buy the theater, because I'd worked on that for a couple of years, and he just wouldn't sell, the guy out of California wouldn't sell it. He said, "Well, why don't we trade? Okay, well, let's make a trade. If your partner wants apartments, I want the theater. Let's make a trade." We said, "Okay, we'll do that." But it's subject to the zoning on that property, because if we can't get, we were going to do 300 units on the theater property. So that's originally why we came with the 300 units, because that was what we were trading, okay? I mean, that wasn't just out of the thin air. That's what we were trading for this property. And so, we said, "Okay, we'll do that. We'll go through the process to see if we can get it rezoned." And we met with the city staff, say, "How do we do this? What's the best way to do this?" And we came up with a way to do it, and that's the way we're doing this now. So, the idea of us getting this thing approved, then exchanges the property. So the guy out of California will no longer own the movie theater. The movie theater will be owned by the current property owner that owns the Riverwoods. So, the idea, now, if he wants to come and try to do something different, it's not going to be PEG development, okay? And we both know, I mean, we think PEG is a reputable developer. I mean, we've done a lot in Provo, and we, everything we've done, we've worked with the city to do what we said we're going to do. And I think the current property owner has done the same thing. So, I could see that maybe people are concerned that there may be bait and switch if it was any other development company, or any other landowner. And it shouldn't make a difference whether that current property owner has more money than Donald Trump. He still has rights, okay? So, I've heard comments about he can afford this and that. It doesn't matter, really, whether I can afford it, he can afford it. There's still rights as a property owner in Provo. And there's also other neighborhoods, neighbors in that area that have made comments through letters, that are not going to come to the meeting when they, when they're for it, that don't have issues with what we're doing. So, the comment says, "Let's get everybody, I think we can get everybody on the same page." The problem is, some of those people aren't in this meeting, and it doesn't work. So if I don't trade the property, if my partner out of California doesn't make the trade, you're, it's exactly right. We're going to come back, and we're going to try to develop that movie theater, because it's dead. It's, we're going to develop it into apartments. And then, the current property owner is going to do whatever he does, right? He has, whatever he wants to come back and do, he can do that. So the idea of us doing both is not accurate one bit. So, if this gets approved the way that we proposed, or one of the options, then the trade happens. My partner out of California now owns this piece, and then, the current property owner of the Riverwoods will own the movie theater, and then he will, I mean, I believe what he says he's going to do is he's going to try to make it nicer and make his property a better property. Now, if we go put 300 apartments there, where the movie theater is, I heard comments about parking issues. That makes it worse, because now we're taking all that empty parking lot, and we're building apartments there. So, and you lose tax base. The city loses tax base. So, you know, the decision has to be made. For us, we're trying to facilitate something that we think's good for the community, and we think it's good planning. If the Planning Commission, the council, don't think that, we're big boys. We're going to continue to do what we're going to do, and we're still going to spend our money in Provo. We're still going to, and we're downtown. We've got a lot of projects going downtown, so, and I'm sure Blake's, or Mr. Roni's going to do whatever he's going to do. So, we just want to make sure that that's clear, that we're not saying we're going to do both deals. And then, the other comment I'd make is the height of the buildings. The current ordinance says 35 feet. We have increased that to 40 feet. So, I, it's 40 feet. It's five more feet. But there's also some undulations and setbacks and breaks in the buildings that create that visibility. So, I appreciate all, everybody's comments, and I want everybody to know, I'm not controversial on this, and if the neighborhood doesn't want it, that's fine. Well, and I understand the neighborhood. Nobody wants to have a change as much as this in their neighborhood. But we also, PEG does have, or is one of its owners in this neighborhood too. So, the comment that PEG lives in Spanish Fork, I live in Spanish Fork, but I'm not the only PEG owner. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Can I ask you a really quick follow-up question? Just to, I don't know if we can go back to the slides. You presented option A, option B. Can you just walk me through option B a little bit more? I can talk about this in the, the conversation comes back to the Planning Commission, but it, just given what I've heard tonight, I don't hear much support for the townhomes kind of option, which just makes me want to have just a little bit more information on option B. So, can you just walk us through that a little bit? Maybe use a pointer to where you're going to add the additional apartments, and, or the additional units?
Yeah, so, this was one of our, I think it's like our second plan here, that had the four stories in the back.
Right.
After we had moved, this was originally four. We moved it back here. So, this became forced, four levels. This was three, this was three. We did kind of a breakup here. And then, these were eight, single-family lots. That's 242 units. What we would do, in the proposal, and that's what is written in the text, I don't know if the staffs had a chance to review it yet, but, legal, but it would be taking this density, and the setbacks and the heights, and putting it right here where the six fourplexes are.
Right.
And then it would be taking this section here, and leaving it the way it is, from the standpoint of--
Three stories.
On 4800 North, it stays.
It would say three stories.
Three stories. What we end up doing is adding units right here on this leg here, and potentially here. Well, we may not, but I, we need the ability to look at that from the standpoint of the feasibility of it. So, right now, this is 218 units, as it sit, well, without this home here. This is 218 units. And so, it'd be the 218 plus 12 units somewhere in one of these two buildings.
You feel you need 12 more units to make it work, plus the eight single-family units? So that'd be a total of 238 units?
Correct.
And will you remind me what the total of your plan?
It's just shy of nine acres.
No, I'm sorry. Of your initial, your second version of the plan was how many total units?
We were 28-point-something total per acre. Oh, are you talking about per acre, or how many total units?
Total units.
So this plan had 242 plus eight.
Oh, there is, okay.
So 250, plus the one house. So, we got, you've got to count the one house here. That's not any of these, in any of these numbers. So there's one home that's not included in this.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Jones?
I have a question for PEG. Are all of these units going to be rental, or will any of them be condominiums?
If we go to this plan, the 24, with the 24 townhomes, they'll all be rentals. If this, in this plan, all these will be rentals, but the single-family homes will be sold off to those lots.
Right.
There won't be any condominiums, no.
Could they become condos?
Not if we're going to develop them. We don't develop condos. So, I guess if, in these 24, that, so if this went to the plan, we could sell those off, and somebody else could do condos, but we would rather not. We won't do condos in this, in this project here. It doesn't make sense. We don't, we think that selling off condos, like in this type of a thing, is worse off for every city, because you have, somebody may buy the condo and rent it to somebody anyway. We control our tenants, right? We control our properties. We maintain our properties. And so, if, we will not sell anything off, because we lose control. So, if, we, as long as we develop, but we're not going to make them condos.
There were many comments when we had the public comments, opposing rentals. There's, there seems to be a bad image about rentals versus people who own the property, and that's why I was asking. But you make a good point about there's a downside in having condos.
Yeah. There is, and we're not condo developers from, I mean, this is not our business. So if there are condos, it's somebody else does it. We're just not, it's just not something we do, so.
Who will manage the, one of this complex?
We have our own, we have our own management company.
Okay, so it will stay with, under the control of PEG?
Yeah, and we're right across the street. Or we're just downtown. We're not very far from the property. We're in the Zion's building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gunther. Okay, we'll return the conversation to the Planning Commission. After the conversation, I'll look for a motion. I did close the public hearing, yes.
I move that we close the public hearing. I'm sorry, is that, is that the motion we're looking for?
I'm sorry, no, no, no. I closed the public hearing. Because I'm a dictator when it comes to that. So yeah, public hearing is closed, and now it's just Planning Commission discussion, and then after that, look for a motion on this item.
I don't have anything new to share, but assuming that this moves forward, and there's progress with the city council to adopt the ordinance amendment, then we'd still see a project plan that would come back to the Planning Commission, and a pro-zone, so is a rezone, or is the existing zone that's in place--
It's a text amendment.
--they're going to work with, so we'd see--
But it's really the same as a rezoning in that regard. The fallback, though, is they would have the existing pro-zone, rather than-- Uh, the fallback, though, is they would have the existing pro-zone, rather than-
With 35 feet being the maximum height, is that right?
Right.
Okay. So my only thought is, I, I love seeing everything together at once. I really appreciate the options that we talked about tonight, and I think the spirit that those are being discussed in by way of, hey, if you don't like this, we can do this, and, and just that pliability that's there, but, um, I like the idea of the commission reviewing everything at once, in something of a, of a finalized kind of a fashion, but I don't have any concerns with, uh, with the proposal as it's being made tonight.
Thank you. Other comments, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I understand that change is difficult for everyone. I mean, no one likes to see their city or their neighborhood change. That property has been vacant for a long time, and underutilized, and it's, as I've stated in the past, at the intersection of two major streets. It's been targeted by the city and their general plan for commercial, or some other higher-density use, or higher-intensity use, not single-family. The last hearing, with what we're calling tonight option B, had single-family homes, and there was a lot of pushback against that. The developer came back with a proposal for townhomes, that provided a solution to people accessing their garages off of 4750, and, um, still made his project work financially, and also decreased the massing of the buildings. And I'm still hearing pushback from the same people, from the neighborhoods. Um, I appreciated the comment made earlier by the gentleman who was talking about future street connectivity, and at some point in the future, should this project go forward, then I would like to just go on the record and say, I think that's a valid, uh, a good idea, actually, to increase connectivity. Um, I really think that, at the end of the day, the traffic impact, whether it's single-family or townhome, is going to be minimal. Townhomes are going to be parked rear-loaded, parked, uh, access from the apartment side. There'll be public parking available there, or visitor parking. Um, so I guess my big quandary, uh, I'm in support of this project, and option A, I think is very well thought out. Um, and that's where I stand.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I am happy that we heard from everybody again. I'm happier that we heard from more people right on 4750. I have been down there and kind, kind of tried to envision what your, the view's going to look like with either stepped-up townhomes or single-family homes. Uh, I, I've, I've been in favor of the single-family homes originally, because it puts the onus of having the apartments in their backyard to new ownership. Um, and other than view, um, with single-family homes there, I think that the impact to the current residents on 4750 is, I don't want to say minimal, um, but it's less than with the townhomes, although I do love the idea of the step of the townhomes. Um, but I think you're going to have parking on-street, whether you have townhomes or single-family homes there, uh, even though that road is not very, really wide enough to do on-street parking for both sides. Um, I, I like going back to the single-family homes. I think it puts less of a burden on the current residents on 4750, uh, and I would be in favor of that, uh, plan. Um, I'm in favor of, I, I know I've kind of voted against this, um, but on, on a hairs width edge in the past, and, uh, having traveled down there a, a lot recently, and thought about it for a long time, um, I'm in favor of putting this development in. I think there, I, in, in the time that I've been on the commission, I haven't seen it or heard from a developer who's spent as much time with the neighbors, going back and back and back and forth, and trying to do something that they, that they can still have viable for them, and to try and work with the neighborhood and the city. So, uh, it doesn't look like there's a lot more give to go here, and I know single-family homes are not ever going to go into that entire property. They just don't fit. Um, that density does fit on University Avenue and 4800 North, absolutely, as collector roads, or arterial roads. Um, and so, I, I would vote for, I don't remember which is option A or B, but-
B is the single-family.
A is the single-family?
B.
B is the single-family, right, okay. So I, I would, I mean, for the neighborhood's sake, uh, and those on, currently on 4750, I would, I would be in favor of option B.
Do, do you share Mr. Anderson's, uh, view that you would like to see that, that version kind of presented more, more clearly before you move forward on option B? Are you fine, uh, going on kind of good faith that option B will be worked out eventually?
Uh, I, I would, I do share that I would like to see it all together packaged up nicely, uh, in a final, um, box with a nice wrapper on it, but I, I could also move forward if we were to see that. I, I don't, I mean, what we've got before us is a yes or no, recommendation or denial on townhomes. And so, I mean, we don't really have, in what we've got in front of us, an option A or B. Um, and this is the first I've seen of this slide. So, um, you know, I, I hate to also delay. I don't want to be the Provo City that people say we can never work with, because it takes a year to do anything. Uh, I want to be the opposite of that, but, um, yeah.
Mr. Pepperoni?
My feeling is that the city council is most interested in hearing what a majority of the planning commission would prefer, and so, even though your staff report was written for the townhome alternative, if majority of the council, of the commission feels another way, I think the council would like to hear what a majority of you think.
Would like to hear by way of a motion?
And, and then also, um, at this point, we don't know what the city council is going to do. The city council may opt to approve amendments to the pro-zone, and then a new plan would come back to you under that pro-zone. But the city council could also say, no, they're most comfortable with zoning this section for single-family homes, and zoning this section MDR, or HDR, or whatever, or LDR, whatever makes sense to the city council, and if that's what they decide, then when it comes back to you, it would come back to you under those zoning designations, those designations prevailing. So, we're not sure yet how the council will ultimately vote on this.
Mr. Jones, you're going to speak before Mr. Smith. Smith, do you still have something to say?
Uh, I, I think Mr. Pepperoni answered the question that I had, was just what we would be voting on tonight, and it looks like if we vote in favor of this, and the city council goes along with what we, we recommend, this whole thing is not a done deal the way it was presented. There's still a, there's still some more approval, and more presentation from, from PEG. I mean, they have to define things, such as the finish, the building finishes, and the actual configuration. What was presented here tonight are two examples of what could happen. Is that, is that accurate to say that?
That's right. The project plan still has to come back to the planning commission.
Right. So we're, we're really voting tonight on a concept approval?
Well, you're voting on a context.
You're voting on whether or not you want, you're an agreement with having the pro-zone amended?
Yes.
You're voting on that. Which version you think should be reflected in that, those pro-zone amendments, is, I think, the question that you're being asked.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Any other points of conversation or discussion? Can I, can I just clarify, like, way of question, this is just something that you mentioned. When you, when you were called opposition to the single-family, um, can you be a little bit more specific about, I, I mean, I think I have in my mind what you're maybe referring to, is that, that people won't buy those homes, perhaps because they don't want to have a, a, a big apartment complex in there, just over the fence, i- i- or is there more to it than that?
There, there was objection to that, that the saleability of those homes may be compromised. Uh, there was also objections to traffic, increased traffic on the street, because that side of the street would now be developed. Um, there was a feeling that it was too abrupt of a change to go from single-family to mid-rise apartments. Um, so those were the, the issues, as I recall them.
Okay, thank you. I don't know that I have much to add to what's already been said, uh, just to reiterate what I hear from, what I've heard from several commission members, uh, about, you know, being part of a community that changes, and, uh, I understand the, the attachments, the promises that were made a long time ago, and, and I don't want to invalidate those, uh, but when you're part of a community, things change, just like when you're part of a family, things change, you adjust, you, um, you give up some of your privileges, some of what you want, um, and I, I just think that's how communities work. So those kinds of, um, those kinds of arguments against the project aren't, aren't very persuasive to me. Um, I, I think they deny the fact that Provo's going to, all of Utah Valley is changing, no matter what, and that, that means for all of us that we give up some privileges, and, and we gain, I think, in, in my personal opinion, we gain advantages, and, and gain other, other kinds of privileges. Um, so, again, I, I don't want to be insensitive to people who feel attached to, uh, previous promises, but I, you know, I, I don't think we can, I, I don't personally, uh, as a member of the planning commissioner, as a member of the city, uh, feel like, um, we have to continually operate upon, upon old, older conditions that we need to constantly adjust. So, having said that, um, I, you know, I, as I've already expressed in my questions of the, of the, of Mr. Rosen, you know, my, this isn't my favorite version, if I were drawing things up, I would, I would do things differently, rather than thinking strictly about, um, phasing kind of density and height, just from north to south. I would also love to see, uh, thought about phasing from east to west, um, and I would, I would love to see more height and density on the, on the east, uh, side of, of the project, but, you know, I, I certainly understand, uh, the neighborhood's desires that are, are contrary to that, and, and, um, you know, I feel that this is a compromise that, uh, where they, they got what they, you know, that there was some concession in, in their direction, and, and, you know, we've gone down from four to three, um, uh, stories all the way around, and as Mr. Anderson already pointed out, you know, it's only five additional feet. Um, so I, I don't feel like, uh, I don't know that the plan, as we currently had it, is as well thought out as I would have hoped, and I think that's, um, what I've heard expressed, uh, from other people. Um, but this seems to be closer to, to something that seems workable to me. Is there, um, anyone who wants to make a motion, or is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of a text amendment to section 14.5022 of the Provo Code, as outlined in Exhibit B of the staff report, and including the accompanying concept plan.
Is now the time to articulate a preference for the single-family versus the townhome on 4750 North?
As your motion stands right now, it would be the townhouse option, because that's the one that's in the staff report, so.
And frankly, and I don't want to give people the, the wrong impression that I don't care, but on that issue, I'm very indifferent. There are seven property owners that I think are impacted by this project, and it's whatever they and the applicant work out, whether it's the single-family, or the townhomes. From a design perspective, I think the townhomes are the best fit, for a couple of different reasons, but I'd say just whatever, uh, makes people the most comfortable is what I'd be comfortable with. So, um, I'll defer to my colleagues here. If anybody wants to, uh, even help me amend the, the motion, we've got, we've got, we have two different trains of thought, it seems like, and I'm not going to help choose sides there.
Before we have a second, can we have an informal poll on who's for single-family homes?
Sure.
Single-family homes?
I'm in favor of single-family as well.
Sorry?
I'm in favor of single-family as well.
Okay. Doesn't matter, and, okay.
And, uh, if it's not too late, I'll amend my motion to add, with the preference on the design that would incorporate the single-family lots on the south side of the project, with additional apartments, from what we see on, uh, and we decided it was A, right, with the single-family?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now B?
Calling concept A.
Option B.
Option B. B then. Single-family. That's what we're looking for, right? Single-family, so if you could help just make that clear, I would appreciate it.
Is that clear enough on the motion? Okay, is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Move on to, uh, items, I'm going to read items two and three in together. Item two, Provo City Parks and Recreation Department requests a zone change from light manufacturing to public facilities for construction of the Spring Creek Park located 1140 South State Street in the Spring Creek neighborhood. Item number three, Provo City Parks and Recreation Department requests project plan approval for the Spring Creek Park located 1140 South State Street in the Spring Creek neighborhood. Austin Corey will, uh, be presenting these two items to us. We will, uh, obviously vote on each of these items separately, but we'll discuss them together.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Spring Creek Park site, uh, this aerial will give you an idea of, uh, on the left, you have the current zoning, on the right, you have, uh, the, the general plan, but the site is highlighted there in red. Uh, as far as the project plan portion that's accompanying this, it has been, uh, already through the coordinator review committee process, the various city departments have reviewed it and found it to be compliant with, uh, city ordinances. Um, although parks are permitted in the M1 zone already, uh, customarily, or, or, uh, by standard operating procedure, Provo typically rezones park facilities, uh, to be in the PF zone, uh, to be consistent with, uh, other, uh, public facilities and the like that are, uh, tax-exempt, as well as, uh, just public. Uh, so that's the, the items that are before you right now. The first is the rezoning from the M1 to the PF. The second is the project plan approval. Uh, I can go over any of the details that you would like, but I will defer to more answering questions if you have specific questions that weren't articulated in the staff report.
Thanks, Austin. Any questions for staff? Mr. Corey?
Couple of really general questions. Does Provo City own the property today?
Yes.
And have we owned it for a while, or?
Uh, I'm not sure about the total length of ownership, but it has been a while. Doug Robbins is here from the Parks Department.
While I'm at it, just park-impact fees and how things like that get funded, is this something that would be done with that kind of revenue, or is there some other stream that we have to, to pay for that?
Yeah, this particular project has been, uh, in the planning process for about 10 years, and the land was acquired using CDBG funds, working with the redevelopment agency at Provo.
Right. And do we, for the actual construction, then, is that an impact fee kind of a thing?
Uh, impact fee, combination impact fee, and also CDBG funds.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
I have a question for somebody, I don't know who, but my only question is, is it big enough to put a soccer field on?
No, no, you meant lacrosse field.
Well, either one, either one. No, this is actually something that goes way back to when I was on the Parks and Rec Board 100 years ago, but yeah, this is awesome.
You can see from the plan, it does call for some open space in the center. The neighborhood committee that helped us design this from the Spring Creek neighborhood desired some open space, so there would be space there for some organized play, but mostly for, you know, neighborhood functions, yeah.
Mr. Jones?
I just want to verify that this is intended to be a neighborhood park and not a destination park where you're going to have league play and have people coming from all over the city to come and utilize this park.
That's correct. It was designated as a neighborhood park, so parking was limited. It's really not designated as a sports facility or sports park, it's just a neighborhood park.
Are these not parking spaces over here on the left of the screen?
They are, but it's not expanded such that it's really intended to bring in and draw in a lot of people from other areas of town or become a regional park of any kind.
May I offer my thanks for planning on this, taking this into consideration?
Sure.
I live across the street from a regional park and no facility, no consideration has been made for parking, even though it's a destination park where people come from all over the city to participate in league plays, and I'm glad that you have considered it here.
Sure. A lot of the thanks goes to our neighborhood committee chaired by Mary Miller. She did a great job organizing the group and I think we've got a good design here.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Well, if the neighborhood chair is here, invite her. Come on forward, Mrs. Miller, thanks.
Do you have any questions or you just want me to?
If there's anything else you'd like to add, now's the time, but.
Okay, well, everyone is very excited about this. We are anxious to see this happen. There has not been one person who has felt that there's really anything wrong with this. It's great. There was a lot of input that went in from the committee as well as the general public, and it was definitely enlightening to get everyone's opinion on that public meeting. And so I think this will be a great asset to our neighborhood. Certainly a much shorter, because no one is against this. We'll get you out of here quick, but it's all good, it's all good.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Miller? Okay, thank you. If there are any other neighborhood chairs outside of the Spring Creek neighborhood that wish to speak to this item, you're welcome to come forward. If not, we'll open it up to the public, any members of the public that wish to speak to this, any of these two items? Okay, we'll return it to the planning commission now for discussion and then again, two separate motions is what we'll need on each of these items. Go for it.
I would like to make a motion on item number two. I would like to forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item two, Provo City Parks and Recreation Department requests a zone change from light manufacturing M1 to public facilities PF for construction of the Spring Creek Park located at 1140 South State Street. And may I continue with the motion?
Let's, let's vote on that one, let's have a second on that one.
Second.
But I will allow you to make the motion on the next one. Okay, Mr. Smith with a second on item number two, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, go for it, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, I would like to recommend the planning commission approve item three, Provo City Parks and Recreation Department requests project plan approval for the Spring Creek Park located at 1140 South State Street.
Mr. Chair, just as one point, you're not recommending anything on this one. Planning commission is actually acting as the land use authority, so it's an approval or denial.
I think she said approve in her motion.
She didn't say approve, but maybe recommended approval.
Sorry. Approval.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Smith, second, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, this is great. Thanks for all your hard work, Spring Creek neighborhood and Parks and Rec, this looks really exciting. Okay, we will hear now, I'll read in items number four through six, Mr. Jones is going to recuse himself, but we still have a full quorum, or we still have a quorum, so we can move forward. Item number four, Kristen Lisa requires project plan approval for a 10-unit apartment building located at 691 East 600 North in the residential conservation zone. This application is subject to a zone change approval in the Joaquin neighborhood. Item number five, Kristen Lisa requires, requests a zone change from residential conservation to a pro zone to allow 10 residential apartments on .19 acres located at 691 East 600 North in the Joaquin neighborhood. Item number six, Kristen Lisa requests an ordinance amendment to add a new pro zone for property located at 691 East 600 North. Property is currently, the property is currently zoned residential conservation in the Joaquin neighborhood. And Dustin Wright will be presenting these three items to us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First to get oriented on the property location for these items, this is in the Joaquin neighborhood. The property outlined here in red is property where the old structure that was there has been demolished, so it's currently a vacant site, surrounded by some residential units. And here's a look at the proposed site plan for this project. It's currently zoned in the residential conservation zone, which to give a little context there, doesn't allow for new developments to take place, it's whatever was existing or single-family homes. The general plan in this area calls for a higher density, specifically the neighborhood Joaquin plan calls for a campus mixed-use zone that allows for batching singles, which just means essentially that more than, four more singles could occupy a unit. And so the applicants looking to redevelop the site have been looking at the options there, the campus mixed-use zone as one, but with that they weren't looking to have batching singles, they're looking for more of a family type of product there. So they're proposing this new pro zone that would allow for 10 units that would be single, or family occupancy or three singles to be there. And so the one-bedroom units with 1.5 parking stalls per unit, so there's 15 parking stalls proposed on the site. On the first level of the structure, the six parking stalls are under the building and then above that would be units. Next to them, there'll be two units on that main floor. As you go up to the next floors, you'll have four units per, per floor there. So along with the parking, the applicants are also providing a bicycle enclosure that you can see there on the, close to the front of the property by the, close to the sidewalk there.
Would you mind, I'm having a terribly hard time making sense of this, of the site plan, can you point out things?
Sure. So the street is out here and here's the sidewalk. This is where the main entrance would be to the structure. Here's the drive aisle that would access parking under the first, or under the second story, so on the first level.
Those are, those are level, they're not underground street, they're not underground parking, there's underneath some kind of?
They would be on the main level, level with.
Underneath, above it would be apartment units, okay, rather than some kind of covered parking structure.
Correct. So back here, parking area that would be covered and then.
So those are port, that's a carport.
Yeah, carport back here and then these three would be the only ones that aren't Landscaped area here and this access to a fire riser room. So the main access, people could come in through here or down here to either go up the stairs to the additional second, third stories or access these first two units on the main story, on the main floor there. And the bike enclosure I talked about would be behind that front wall right there in this area.
So on the main floor, the two units would have windows looking out over, what direction is that exactly? East?
Yeah, so here's an elevation, the most current elevation that shows that front entry from the sidewalk here, that bike enclosure would be back behind this wall, the drive access would come down that side there and parking underneath and in the back. So here's a elevation of the front view that you'd see from the, from the street. Here's the side, the east side elevation, those doors there go to the fire riser room. This is the opposite side, the west elevation where those, that open area is where those parking stalls would be, and that archway in the center would lead to those stairs to go up to these units up here, and the bike enclosure behind that wall there. And then here's the north or the rear elevation there, so. So yeah, essentially that's the project. Like I mentioned, the rezone is necessary, the zone, the pro zone is a zone that doesn't exist, so that's what the ordinance amendment would be, would be creating that zone. I just, or Bill handed out a copy of that with, in red, some revisions that we've made, just some corrections and grammatical things like that highlighted in red. But having reviewed the project along with creating this pro zone, staff finds that it would work with this and the recommendations for all three items are in the staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question, and funny enough, it's kind of probably a stupid one, but I, go back to the original, I mean, this one here, with the garbage cans in the back there, I can't imagine a garbage truck getting back there, picking up cans and being able to get out unless he backs back out.
Yeah, so those, those are the kind of garbage cans that would be wheeled out to the curb.
Oh, they come out to the garbage cans, the garbage people aren't going to go back to the back.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. If that's as bad as it gets, then we're pretty good.
Other, other questions for Mr. Wright from the commission? Okay, we'll invite applicant Kristen Lisa to come forward or whoever is representing.
Hello, I'm Kristen LaSaw.
I'm sorry, LaSaw.
Lisa's good too. We've never done this before, so did you have other questions about it or is there any things that you would like me to say?
Any, any questions? Is there anything you wish to add to that you think would be useful for us to what Mr. Wright presented? Any other details or information?
I don't think so. No?
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. LaSaw? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, open up to public comment, first open up to the Joaquin neighborhood chair or anyone representing the Joaquin neighborhood council. Don't see anyone here. Okay, any other neighborhood chairs that wish to speak to this item? Come forward.
Hi, I'm Shannon Bingham from the Tempanogus neighborhood. I'm the neighborhood chair there. Can I see the front facade? I have, I have a couple of concerns. The street presence for this building, so living in the downtown, I see how my own neighborhood that I live in has been carved up, a single-family home removed and whatever structure can be built to fit in that space and, you know, this is from the 70s, 80s, And I, I see the potential for this, for this area. I would like to see something that fits with Provo's, Provo City's design standards. I would like to see more repetition, more, more of a street presence. I would like to see, I would like to see better design instead of, I feel like it's trying to fit as many units on a piece of property that can possibly fit there. And I, I see from my own neighborhood how, how it has, you know, these, these structures now that were built 30, 40 years ago are blighted buildings and my concern is what, what really stands out about this building, what makes people really want to live here over something that is designed more appropriately to, to fit on the space that it is, that it's designed to fit on. So I, I have concerns with the, with the density and the, and the design of the building. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak to this item?
I just wanted to check something. So you said it would be three people, three tenants per unit, and then in the paper it says two. Is it two unit? So you can be a family, a single family, like they could live there, or it said the number of singles per unit in, in these things we were given, it says two, two singles and then you said three? I was wondering which one is it?
Can I respond to that? Yeah, so originally there was a discussion about limiting it to two. We had some discussion with the city council attorney and felt like that having a development agreement that limits, that would violate a state statute of what the definition of family is, which is a family or three singles. And so that's why the, that was a more recent discussion than what's in the staff report. So staff's recommendation is that would be three.
Yeah, that makes sense. So my only, my only thing here is with this, there's 15 car parks, and so if there's two people, then that means 20 people, like realistically 20 cars, and five cars is an that much of a difference, but like another 20 cars on that street is like, it's, that's when, that's just not cool, because right now there's already no parking at all within like one and a half blocks around there because of the village, which is right across, and the village doesn't have enough parking as it is. So that's my only concern, just if you have three, three tenants per unit, that's 30 people, which is realistically 30 cars. So you're going to have another 10, 15 cars and where are they going to go? That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Could you state your name for the record?
My name's Elijah. I recently just bought a house next door, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Elijah. Anyone else from the public that wishes to address this item? Anyone else from the public that wishes to address this item? Uh, well, yeah, i- in a second we'll allow the applicant to, to address any comments. Okay, now's a good time, it doesn't look like there's anyone else who wishes to speak to this item, so if the applicant or part of the applicant team wants to come forward, welcome to do so.
Thanks, my name's Wendy Shirley, part of the applicant, um, so a couple of things to address both, I, I agree with your comments, this, the exterior of this is kind of a work in progress still, so, um, we're working on what the DRC committee wants.
I missed that, what did you say, is it work in progress?
It's somewhat, yes, we're, we're getting closer each time to get that welcoming presence from the street that people want, um, also just to follow what is currently, um, allowed, I guess, the parking, parking works with the city, or we've, we've just have done everything that the city's told us to do, but one thing to keep in mind, we do wanna keep this, um, we wanna do ten units, and we wanna keep it just to, we don't want batching, we don't want a bunch of students in, in there, and, um, so we've addressed kind of the density with actually going ten, there would be less people, we're hoping there's going to be less cars, and so this is just how we've been able to work with it, with what this current city ordinances are, I guess, with, with parking, so even though it looks like we're trying to get as many units as we can on a piece of property, we're actually trying to keep the density down by trying to get, you know, three or less people in there, um, and really, if I can say this, we'd like to just do married housing, newlyweds and things, we know there's a big need for that around the Provo campus, and that's what we are trying to do with this building, so we're hoping a lot of those people also, um, might be just one car per unit, some will have two, obviously, but we're trying to consider the traffic on that road too, so this is just kind of the best way we've been able to do it so far, and that's all.
Can I ask just a, a quick follow-up question, ma'am? Um, when you, when you talk about you're still working on the design, can you give us just a little bit more sense of what's being worked on still? I mean, I, I tend to agree with, uh, the, the comment from, is it Shannon? That, in terms of just the, the design, tell me, tell us a little bit more about what you're.
So our architect was gracious enough to be here, so he might wanna address that too, but we're just trying to give it a better presence from the street, maybe center that entry a little bit, um, give it better design elements, we like the, this east side, that look, and we kind of wanna mimic that on the front of the building, um, do you wanna comment on that?
So I'm Travis Dance with, uh, RVA Architects on this, uh, one of the things the Design Review Committee has asked us to do was to incorporate that porch-type feel on the front, and limit that area to a single-story, to kind of reflect the single-family homes that are in that area, we've also been trying to complement the village that's across the street as far as materials and things go, I know we're not quite as big, and then also trying not to be exactly the same as the two apartment buildings that are on either side of that with a lot of siding, um, you know, those, especially the one to the east, that front facade is really just full of stairs, stairways, and, so looking at this, um, one of the things the Design Review Committee is also trying to have us do is, is more of that defined entryway that we've done there, we've pulled it out to the street, we do have a really tight site to work on, we're limited by, uh, setback requirements, uh, things like that, so we've pretty well at this point maximized the available space on the ground.
Is this accurate, that you plan to have three different textures?
Yes.
Okay.
And so there's, there's the, the red brick, the stone, and then.
It'd be an Ephesus, a stucco type.
Stucco.
Yeah, once again reflecting what's going on over at, uh, the village, they've got several more materials than this, but they are a similar type, a similar arrangement.
Any other questions, architect for Travis? Okay, thanks. Okay, return the, I'll close public comment, uh, now, and return these three items to the Planning Commission to discuss, after, uh, discussion, but, uh, looking for a motion, motions.
Could I make another comment, help probably clarify a little bit about, uh, the design? Um, so they mentioned that it's, it's been to the, the Design Review Committee, um, a couple of times, and this is, um, the latest revision that we've gotten based on those comments, um, so there is the option still to, to take this design back, or to, um, still modify it, uh, take it back to Design Review to get their final approval, or if you guys are comfortable with the current, uh, design, then you could, um, you know, go with that as well, so there still is that option to, um, have one of the conditions that it receives that Design Review Committee final approval.
And that would be part of a motion on item number four, i- i- am I right to feel like the order of this is, is backwards from what it normally is, so maybe we should, um.
It's seem like that to me.
Approve items five and six, is that right?
So item four is a project plan which you guys will make the decision, with the conditions, if you read those, um, the conditions there, that the ordinance amendment gets approved, and that the rezone gets approved by council, um, so you could, you could do item number four first, because those conditions.
Just upon those conditions.
Exists, that obviously the zone has to get created, and the project has, or the property has to get rezoned to that zone.
There's gonna be conditions either way, because it has to go to the council for the other two.
Can I, um, ask staff, and just another question about neighborhood issues? Um, and I'm, I'm a little bit surprised that no one from the neighborhood was here tonight, um, so in their absence, well, I'm, I'm sorry, by no one I mean, the neighborhood chair, and, and, uh, and so forth, sorry Elijah. Um, I'm surprised that the neighborhood chair, or one of the vice chairs is not here, um, is there anything else you can tell us about the conversations that you've had with them, besides what's reflected in the staff report about preferring, uh, married housing, which sounds like, uh, the applicant is, is hoping to, uh, to do?
Yeah, so the, um, the staff report mentions that, that staff received some calls about the project, and the majority of them were, uh, just trying to find out more information, they didn't necessarily express, uh, you know, specific concerns, um, just kind of want to know about it, and, um, the applicant also, from what I understand, has met with the, the neighborhood, I believe the neighborhood chair, but maybe they could answer that more, um, and, and gone over the project with them, so.
Yeah, I would love to hear what Mr. Graff had to say about, about this project during your conversations with him.
Do you want me to state my name again?
Sure.
Kristen LaSaw. We did bring this project to the neighborhood committee, and Bill Graff, and they, is it called an advisory vote, they supported it.
Okay.
Um, mostly because it was the single-bedroom, um, apartment, and they liked the idea of having young married couples living in the neighborhood.
Okay, good to know.
I think you should consider them in reverse order.
Okay. Um, I'll just say a couple more things, I mean, I, I certainly appreciate Elijah's concern about parking in that area, um, and I think it's worth just mentioning that that's an issue that transcends obviously just this single, um, single project, and that I think the, the city is well aware of and is, uh, trying to address in a much more, um, kind of thorough and, and kind of macro, macro way, um, and given that this is most likely going to be married housing, I think it does diminish some of those concerns that you have, but again, I, I think you're right, that parking is a, is a really, um, big issue in the Joaquin Neighborhood, and that's, that's being taken really seriously at the city level, and, and I think we can be confident that the city will continue to work until it has a solution for, uh, a kind of, uh, a thorough and a citywide parking plan that acknowledges the specific issues in, in the Joaquin Neighborhood. Okay, unless there's any other comments, look for a motion, and as Mr. Pepperoni suggested, let's start with six, and then work our way down.
I'll take a turn.
Mr. Smith.
I would like to make a motion that we recommend, um, approval, forward a recommendation of approval to the council, um, on the ordinance amendment to add a new pro-zone for property located at six ninety-one east, six hundred north, which is now zoned residential conservation in the Joaquin Neighborhood, on item six.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
I second that motion.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there are motion on number five.
I'll keep going.
Do it.
Um, I most, I move that, uh, we recommend approval to the council on item number five, where there is a request to, of a zone change from residential conservation to pro-zone in order to allow ten residential apartments on, uh, point one-nine acres located at six ninety-one east, six hundred north, the Joaquin Neighborhood.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Uh, prior to, uh, a motion number four, I'll, I'll just express a preference that, uh, that has stipulated in the staff recommendation, that, that this does go back to the, um, Design Review Committee, and, you know, for, for final approval there, I would, I would be most comfortable with that.
I can keep going, I can go all day.
Yeah.
These are easy ones.
Go with it.
I, I would, uh, make a motion that we approve the project plan for a ten-unit apartment building located at six ninety-one east, six hundred north, in the RC zone, um, subject to zone change, change approval, all staff recommendations, including a fifth, uh, from the Planning Commission, that it go back to the Design Review Committee, uh, for final approval.
There are second?
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Item number eight, again as I mentioned before, item number seven has been withdrawn, um, I don't know if Mr. Jones fled the building, or if he'll, he's coming, okay. I may have fled while I had the time. Uh, item number eight, Provo City Community Development Department requests a zone change for approximately fifty-eight point six acres of property located at approximately fifteen-hundred South State Street, from light manufacturing zone to low-density residential zone in the Spring Creek Neighborhood, and Mr. Corey will be presenting that item to us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so, uh, two weeks ago, at your last Planning Commission meeting, we discussed this item, and as, uh, and staff was requesting a continuance specifically for the purpose of allowing additional time and, and noticing for property owners and, and things like that, um, so I don't know that I need to go necessarily much into the history, but, uh, just briefly, it currently it's zoned M1, uh, there, the general plan does call for this area to be a, a mixed-use area, um, that's the, the most recent general plan that we have, uh, more recently, a neighborhood plan was produced that has also, uh, not only reiterated, but maybe emphasized specifically how that mixed-use might develop, uh, in, in support of the general plan. So, uh, the, the neighborhood has made a request that, uh, in order to prevent, uh, new non-conforming uses from coming in, and, and inhibiting the potential for achieving that goal, uh, that this property be zoned LDR, um, as a way of moving forward towards, uh, the visions that are outlined in the general plan and that neighborhood plan. So that's the basis in that, since, since the last meeting, uh, the last Planning Commission meeting, we have received more response, I know there was a specific request about the actual property owners, uh, there, all in all, uh, there's a number of different parcels that are chopped up, but there's only eleven property owners in the entire fifty-eight acres, of that, we've heard from six of them who are in favor of the zone change, or, uh, admittedly just indifferent in some way here or another, um, we've, we've not been able to hear from four of them, uh, despite reaching out, um, the biggest player still being pro-still, uh, that is the largest amount of land there, we, we still have not been able to get a response from them, um, and one property owner, uh, has been in discussion with staff now, and, and he's not in favor of the change, uh, specifically just in, in his properties though, and, and he's here, so I'll let him go into any details that he might want to explain there, um, but he has requested to be excluded from, uh, this request, uh, for the zone change, just to highlight, um, specifically where this is, this is, this is just identifying the existing, uh, operating businesses that by virtue of this zone change, they would become legally non-conforming. Uh, this image right at the north is, uh, existing building that is currently being leased by the, the property owner who has requested to be excluded, he also owns, uh, a parcel that's north of that building, and this larger parcel that's, uh, just north of thirteen-twenty south, uh, so those, those are the properties that are, uh, that's a request to be excluded, uh, that's, that request came in this morning, so it's obviously not in the staff reports, uh, at this time, but we wanted you to be aware of that. I don't, I don't have any further comments.
Any questions for Mr. Corey? Mr. Jones, do you want to turn on your microphone?
Would the, um, department be in favor of excluding that property owner?
That's fine with us, um, I think it's, uh, ultimately it's really the decision of the council and the direction that they want to head with that, but, um, I, we're certainly not attempting to force anyone out of current plans that they might have, but.
So we could, we could amend, or we could include that in the motion, that we recommend excluding that particular parcel?
Correct, it would be similar to, uh, one of your items previously tonight, um, that I think it's, it's just more, we're looking for what your recommendation is on that, and how you feel about that exclusion.
Mr. Smith.
I do have a question, is, is, I mean, if we, if we change the whole thing, despite, uh, the disagreement of one, one of the, uh, members of that zone, doesn't mean that they can't continue in a non-conforming manner until, or unless they want to change something on their properties, is that correct?
Right, uh, so by legal non-conforming, uh, rights, regardless of the zone that it gets changed to, if they're current and operating right now, they can continue to operate exactly how they are, um, there's nothing that forces them to change, uh, what it does create, though, is if they look to expand the business, or grow, or, uh, build new structures, then, depending on the extent to which they're looking to do that, they could run into some hindrances.
They can also sell the property as a non-conforming use, and the owner can continue that non-conforming use, and use it with the land, not with the.
Yeah. Okay, invite the applicant, does he have one more question for staff, Mr. Jones?
Well, just, just to clarify, so the, the non-conforming business would be grandfathered in, they could continue with what they're doing, but they can't expand to the adjacent property because they're not zoned properly, but they could, say, tear down their manufacturing place and. But they could, say, tear down their manufacturing place and, and turn it into residence. So, they, they really could choose whichever zone they wanted to, to conform to.
Correct. If, if they were looking to tear down and redevelop in any way, though, they would be restricted to the zone that was on the ground, which in this instance would be the LDR, or they would have to request a new zone.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Invite the applicant to.
Neighborhood Chair.
Sorry, the neighborhood chair, because the applicant is community development. Okay. This is Miller.
One of the major things that propelled this proposal was the fact that we have another storage unit. There are now five of them within a very short distance from each other. And to get the type of, of development that we need for residential, we felt like this was a good preemptive move because we do have the Provo Business Park still in our, our neighborhood and further south that could pretty much accommodate anything that might have gone in there otherwise. So, it, it was, it was proposed, thinking this would be a win-win, that we'd get the residential that we need and, and even have, even with that LDR, you know, that we would have a bit more control over what is developed and, and trying to get that to go along with the neighborhood plan and all of that. So, that's why we brought it up.
Thanks. Any questions for Ms. Miller? Thank you. Is there any, anyone from the public that wishes to address this item? Come on forward, sir, and state your name.
My name is Russ Jacobson. I'm concerned with the property that Austin talked about, that I would like to have exempted from the zone change. The, the rest of the change, I, I think I don't, other than being difficult to aggregate the properties properly, would be difficult to do and will take a lot of time. I don't see an objection to that. The reason this is not developed as an M1 property or use is due to circumstances beyond my control and we're within the control of Provo City. There have been hundreds and hundreds of people make a living on that property from 1954 until 19, or until 2006, when Amcor abandoned the block manufacturing business. Shortly after that, as an owner developer, which I've done a number in Provo, this has been a while, but number in Provo, this is the first time I've ever been on a timer for this kind of a subject, because it's more complicated than that. That I made an application for 1,100 storage units permitted use. It made it all the way through the approval process, except for Casey Say, who's a safety engineer, said that because of the growth we're having on the east bench, we need an intersection with light. The state said, you can have an intersection with a light, but you can't have a three-way intersection. It has to be four-way. So, there my project stopped, my $8,000 was refunded, and we went into negotiation, and the result of that negotiation was the construction of that road that stubbed in there. Do you know what it stubbed into? Anybody have any idea what it stubbed into there? Or why it stubbed? The road to nowhere?
Go ahead and tell us.
I'll, I'll inform you if I get another couple of minutes.
Yeah. There's not a huge rush behind you, so.
That's the Provo City substation. And when it comes time to do the road, the, the road is part of master plan, it's on the master plan, but it was going diagonal. We negotiated with engineering, we ran it to there, and it has sewer and water plumbing, everything, it needs to be a regular, developable street, but Provo City Power would not allow the sale or the use of the land to continue the road. Now, remember, Provo City Engineering wants this road to go through, but Provo City Power said, no, we own that property and you can't do that unless you buy it from us. Okay. Next, okay, the road ends here, but we need to get the sewer and the storm drain down, which is down by the tracks to go, the sewer runs parallel the tracks, as does the storm drain. And Provo City Power said, no, we will not allow an easement through here because we have an underground line, and unless somebody wants to pay us to move all of those transmission lines at about $200,000 a pole, we won't do it. Okay? So, what we've got is a property here with a road, everything's legal on it for M1 development, except we have no sewer or storm drain and no immediate way to get there. Okay. Provo School District, about 18 months ago, starts shopping in this area for a place to put their bus facility in. Are any of you aware of Provo City's plans for their bus facility?
No.
Can you point that out, what Provo City School District owns, please?
This property is almost.
Almost, what, three and a half acres? But they had also talked to Pro Steel and to another property owner up there, didn't reach an agreement. They approached the Jacobson Brothers and after some negotiation, they purchased that property. So, that property is going to be used. It was supposed to start in February, the plans are all drawn for it. The plans are not known to Provo City because Provo School District doesn't have to disclose their activities to Provo City. That's why you don't know about it. Anyway, it's all designed for a facility for the Provo School District school buses, 82 school buses will be there. They've informed me that they've moved the bidding from spring until fall in hopes of being able to get more realistic bids. At the time they move forward, then I can only assume that they'll move forward in the fall, but they'll move forward at their own pace, that they will put the sewer and the water, or excuse me, the sewer and the storm drain and complete that on down in order to be able to use that part of the property that overlaps the road I put in and the rest of the property to the west, down to where it intersects with Pro Steel for a, for their bus facility. Then, that makes the property, again, usable to be able to connect to those facilities for an M1 use, which is, right now, just exactly what M1 use I would apply there, I don't know. But I would like the opportunity to bring that project plan to the planning commission as an M1 project because I don't, well, two things. One is, I don't think I'd be very good at developing residential property. My development has all been commercial or office in Provo, or school, private school in Provo. So, but I am able to do this, and what I'm thinking about, just my thinking now, is on both sides of the road, but mainly on that north side piece, is approximately 32,000 square foot of warehouse flex space. That right now, 50 cents a square foot, has a vacancy rate and has had for a year of less than 2% countywide. It's rentable today for 50 cents a foot. It'll be rentable, if you want to wait 30 days, that's 60 cents a foot. And if you want to wait a couple of months, you could probably get 70 cents a foot for it. That's the value that we would have as property owners and as developers at probably a three-to-one ratio of, of income over cost for M1 versus selling the property. If, if the property is zoned into the low-density residential, then our alternative, the way I look at it, is to sell the property to a developer, and then I take whatever purchase price I'm able to get, do an exchange or a trade for some property, and take that essentially as an interest-bearing retirement income, if you would. I don't think it'll retire three of us if we do that. You don't get very much money out of an investment today, you know, it's a cash investment. Much better developed, much better to have a rental cash flow. And I would envision even just on that north part of the, the street, having the ability to have eight to 10 employers in that space very easily with a number of employees. So, back, putting that property back into where it's, people who are earning a living are able to have a facility and a place to work to earn that living.
Thank you, sir. I think we get the picture at this point. Okay. Any other public comment? Are there, we've closed public here at this point, and return the conversation to the planning commission? Go ahead.
This is a tough one for me, for a lot of different reasons, and I really appreciate the work that the neighborhood's done. I think I understand what they're working to accomplish, and that's really easy to appreciate. Looking big picture at the 60 acres, this might be the best idea ever to have it develop residentially, and we're talking about anywhere from 15 to 30 units to the acre. It'd be 15 with the low-density residential, and if that changes down the road to fit in maybe more completely with the neighborhood plan, it'd be something higher than that. But, just lots of different thoughts, so it's going to be kind of scatterbrained for me, but, and, and I guess I'll use this partly, at least as an example, I really appreciated the approach that we took a meeting ago with the residential development that was proposed next to the new big road that runs through the west side of the city, where there were some concerns with design of the subdivision, i.e. the cul-de-sacs and utilities and that sort of a thing. And we were looking at a pretty high level of detail then before any of us, and we, obviously, we, we would have needed to have had a different perspective on that project to have felt comfortable changing the zoning. And tonight, we don't have, you know, any of, of that to work with relative to seeing how maybe access might be addressed, how a development might work with the kind of neighbors that they would have if something did happen on some of the vacant properties here next to, for example, Pro Steel, and just how that relationship between those two very distinct land uses could work, which is a big concern for me. I don't know Pro Steel real well, but I, I've been in a few different steel fabrication kind of facilities. There's usually some noise, and a lot of times they run more than one shift, so you get noise when people are trying to enjoy, you know, maybe some, something else next door if there is a residential use there. So, I mean, just to try to be succinct, I'm, I'm concerned about compatibility, even though Pro Steel would have, like Mr. Corey said, certainly rights to continue to operate the way that they do today. Things do get a little bit tricky when all of a sudden you've got a bunch of new neighbors that maybe have a different expectation about how you should operate. And admittedly, I have a really strong bias relative to manufacturers, facilities with really heavy machinery that depreciates over a long period of time, that definitely has a positive impact on the city relative to just finances, the employment can be a good thing as well. So, that, that's just another thing that's kind of hard for me to get over relative to the concept of having the property change uses. At the same time, I, I feel the opposite way about storage units. They take up a lot of room, they don't generate much property tax, and they employ essentially nobody per acre. So, if the immediate concern is, is trying to thwart, you know, that kind of development, I'd love to look at some options, maybe relative to what's allowed or not allowed in the M1 zone, and, and maybe try to work from that perspective. And it just kind of, again, big picture, economic development guys here, they probably were involved, I would guess, when the Spring Creek neighborhood plan was put together, and they're not concerned about losing the manufacturing opportunities here.
No. One thing, I don't think I have an aerial, I apologize, I wasn't prepared for that question, but if you move south along State Street, once you get past, south of 1860 is what's referred to as the Mountain Vista Business Park, which is a large, it's planned industrial, commercial, but in essence, it's another light manufacturing zone that exists just to the south of this, and there's a pretty significant amount of land there that they're currently working on to, to get tenants in.
In Provo City, is that, that Provo City controls quite a bit of?
Yes. The government agency owns quite a bit of it. Economic Development is marketing it.
So, I guess the last thought, just maybe relative to what, from my perspective, might be good next steps. I, I'd just love to see this maybe move a little bit slower. The low-density residential zone, 15 units to the acre, just from what I experience, land is, is highly sought after that somebody can develop today at that kind of density, given, I understood, Stan, that we had a couple of development consultants that expressed support for this change, which could be a good thing in the last meeting where it was discussed. But I guess I feel like changing the zoning now to green light development in the immediate future at that kind of density might lead to something that would have us regret. So, maybe another zoning option that would preclude the kind of development that the neighbors are concerned about, but not immediately put the property in a position where it would develop as quickly as I think it would with the low-density residential zone, is what I'd love for us to look into. Sorry for being long-winded.
Well, thank you for, for sharing your thoughts. Any input from staff? Was that, can you maybe give us, in light of Mr. Anderson's comments and concerns, anything about the process and, and kind of putting this forward, proposing this? To what degree did you consider alternatives to low-density residential to prevent the storage unit development, or is there anything else to, to share background-wise?
Well, the, the intent of the LDR is really to become interim, even though it does, it does hold that possibility of opening the door to entitled development without seeking what the city almost even envisions as, as more dense than that. With, with a few of the conditions that exist on the site and things, this, this specific area, we actually see as one that might not be quite as favorable to, as far as land values and cost of construction, as far as, there's some unconsolidated fills on some of the properties and things like that that have to get, be mitigated, which obviously elevate those values. But in, in essence, and to make my answer short, the LDR, the LDR was considered a reasonable interim approach of preventing new uses from coming in that inhibit the goals, but not fully entitling the property to where, if, if a developer really wanted to, to pursue the visions of the city and maximize the utilization of the property, they would still be coming in for a rezone request, and you would see full development plans with those requests as far as how streets would lay out and et cetera. So, that, that's basically the essence of what's before you.
Do we have any situations in the city where, where we have industrial next to residential, and there's a never-ending sea of complaints that are chronic and they never go away?
Believe yourself.
I believe just south, south of here.
I don't know. Mary, would you like?
That's what I'm used to. So that's partly why I'm...
We, we do have one situation in, actually, it's just south of here. The same PIC zone is, there's a residential neighborhood that's adjacent to that, which has a long history of why it was permitted in the first place, but there are some conflicts there, primarily between the, the owners. I don't know if it's necessarily a, a land use conflict as much as it is a personal property owner conflict, but...
Got it.
But Provo City put it there because they knew it could be successful and it had been for many years until a personal property owner came into, onto the scene. So for years and years and years, it worked fine.
Okay. It seems like Pro Steel really is the only operation here that's of much magnitude that probably would, would lend itself to upsetting neighbors.
Most, yeah, you, you are correct. Most of the other uses are fairly quiet. There is, uh, this property is a, it's an auto wrecking and kind of mechanic shop, which would produce some noises and things. It, it actually, funny enough, operates, there is a home that's on the site, but the, the facilities and everything operate in the bays behind. But other than that and Pro Steel, most of the other operations are, are all fairly innocuous. The other thing to, to mention is as far as the neighborhood plan and the general plan, it, it does support commercial uses existing on the front. And again, what you have before you is more of an interim step rather than trying to all-out pre-zone property to get exactly what we envisioned there. But, um, commercial uses existing right along State Street could certainly exist in, in compatibility with the, with any kind of residential development.
It's probably something other than a wrecking yard, right, or auto repair?
Right. It would certainly have to move from that light manufacturing to more of a light commercial or, or something like that. Most of the other uses there, at least the way they exist right now, the, the property just to the south of that is a, a pawn shop and, and an upholstery shop, which are not quite as intense as the others.
Is there any reason why you're seeking LDR rather than MDR?
I had the same question.
Yes. So again, that historically in Provo, uh, there's been quite a bit of hesitancy of pre-zoning property and granting full entitlements without a development plan actually accompanying that. And so that's why this becomes that interim approach of, we don't have development plans, but we're trying to keep the area preserved so that it could have the potential of that MDR. But without development plans, there's just a hesitancy to entitle the property fully.
Go ahead.
My question is about the, the Provo City property or the Provo School District property that's there, which looks like is included in the, in the outlined zone change. How, how does that play into it? Would that change? Does it, does anything we do do anything to them at all? Or do they continue with, with whatever plans they have to put their, things there that are not lower medium, uh, density residential?
Uh, as, as a school, they're allowed to go in any zone.
As a school district.
As a school district. Yeah. So the zone that's on the ground doesn't affect their ability of producing something.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of having this go back and be cut up in a way that, that maybe looks, you know, I don't know when's the last time Mr. Jacobson expanded his, his project on the land that he's there right now. It sounds like he's got plans to do something, but you know, if, I'm, I'm in favor of, of maintain, or putting something in place that maintains it the way that matches with the neighborhood and the area plan. But I just think that there's some, some kind of cutting that can be done that, um, that, uh, looks different. I don't know how to say it. I'm also, I mean, really honestly, I, I could, I could go either way on this. I mean, because the people can still do what they're doing currently. They just can't increase, you know, without coming back for zone change.
Public comment is closed.
Yes, only, only to rewind the...
Public, public comment is closed, sir.
Okay. That's what he said? Sit down? Is that what I heard? Sit down? I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing.
Essentially, yes.
Any, any project plan has to come back before you people. And that's where I'd expect to get shot down on the physical. I expect to have a very difficult time getting what I would like to do there done past this group or the neighborhood. And I would expect to be able to live up to that.
Even, I mean, I'd feel a lot more comfortable just a different resident, with a different residential zone that would, would decrease the likelihood that somebody's gonna, gonna take the plunge maybe before, you know, get maybe more feedback from some of the industrial folks or something like that. For me, just that 15 units to the acre, that's where people can afford, you know, make whatever improvements they need to, to the property or deal with utility issues or different things like that. And the market right now is so hot that it seems like, yeah, people doing everything they could to make that happen right away.
So your, your fear is that an R1, an LDR project would come forward immediately? So maybe an R110 zone or R120 zone or something may be a better interim?
I think there'd be a lot less market demand for that today. If we're looking maybe just to, to, if we're looking to preclude the manufacturing development, then that for me certainly addresses some of my concerns.
Okay.
I would second that motion if you were to make it. Change, change the, the medium density at R110.
R110?
R110, yeah.
Okay, well, um...
Is it? Can I, can I say one more thing? I mean, have, have we talked, I may have spaced out a, a little bit. Have we talked thoroughly enough about Mr. Jacobson's request? I mean, I feel like you were maybe pointing to this, but is there, is there more conversation to be had there or?
My, my thing is, is the neighborhood plan and the area plan doesn't want increased growth in that kind of area that Mr. Jacobson has or the, the current residents have. And, and so I'm inclined to go with, I mean, these, the area plans are well-thought-out and well-planned and I'm inclined to follow them. And if they want a holding over the whole thing, then I'm all right with that because people that are there can continue to operate as they are.
The difference, however, here is that today he has a right that when the council acts on the change, he no longer has. And that's... Yeah, I think I completely agree. I want to be as supportive as possible of, of the, the long-range plans that are in And again, maybe this is just my personal perspective, a little office warehouse kind of developments can be great and do some great things for local economies and that sort of a thing. And, and they're not in my mind a Pro Steel either in terms of the impact that they likely would have. Guess they could be. So I'd probably be inclined at least now to exclude the properties that were, were described from a change. And also I, I think they could function distinctly apart from what's to the south if it were developed residentially, given the access that they have to State Road or to State Street from that lighted intersection and that sort of a thing. So that's another thing that had helped me be comfortable excluding them.
You have, again, also you have, I mean, you already have something there that kind of blocks and you have this theoretically, you know, the school buses immediately to the west.
Right.
And, and I mean, I, I share the same opinion as you, Mr. Anderson, about, um, and maybe it's worth asking what's immediately to the north as well? It's unclear.
Directly to the north is actually an approved town home project. It, it was done under a pro zone, but it hasn't moved forward. Uh, and then just north of that is the park that we just discussed earlier today. I guess, and then to the west of both of those, it's off of this aerial, but actually if we go back, I believe.
There you go.
You have to pull that map down. And zoom into here, please. So this is the park site. This is that town home development. This is the border of where, uh, the M1 zone sits and, and this is a mobile home park as well. Then north of that is all town homes primarily.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really like the idea, given what's currently there at least of, of that kind of flex warehouse space that we talked about. Can't remember if it was last meeting where you could have a, you know, live workspace there, if that's what Mr. Jacobson is, is potentially imagining. But either way, I don't, I don't know that I see a problem with, right now at least, preserving that space as M1 either. So if I can restate what, what Mr. Anderson has suggested would be R110 zone, accepting out Russ Jacobson's property. Is that right?
And honestly, Pro Steel, I can't believe that they, they're not here, really.
We've gone to the property and visited it physically and gone into the business and tried to talk to people and haven't had success.
My suspicion is that that's going to stay manufacturing for a while. Yeah. Yeah. So I'm inclined to not make them a non-conforming use. But I'll tell you what, they've had their chance to speak and they didn't. So the way Mr. Pepperoni just described it, I'm gonna...
They're gonna pay.
Well?
They're gonna make them pay.
Maybe, maybe. They still have another opportunity with the city council, I guess, to, to speak up, but...
They're only affected if they expand.
If they try and expand, yeah.
You know, honestly, I think the greater chance is that they end up with a bunch of neighbors that just make things miserable enough for them and the city that people start to work to, to cause them to change, which likely would happen over a really long period of time. And who knows? That might be best anyway if we're really trying to, to bring change about in the, in the area, as I'm trying to talk myself into it. So, um, like Mr. Pepperoni said, is it Mr. Jacobson that have that right? So I move that we recommend that the proposed zone change be approved, changing all of the 58.6 acres except for those owned by Mr. Jacobson from M1 to R110, to R110.
Second?
As part of discussion on this?
Yeah.
Can we go back to the overhead and, and can you point out where the Pro Steel is? That whole deal? Okay. And then the school property, Provo School District property is just above it?
Yes, right, the vacant land.
To the north. And Mr. Jacobson is?
And Mr. Jacobson's property line is about right here, but he's everywhere.
And across the road, right?
Okay. So essentially, all we've affected is the bottom two-thirds of what was originally presented effectively.
Any more discussion on the motion?
I would just raise the question, if we, if we change it to R110, is that going to scare off anyone who wants to put in a legitimate, um, structure that would conform to an MDR or is that going to scare them off? I mean, when they see R10, is that, is that going to, to tell them, oh, well, I have no chance of putting in something above an R10? R110?
I don't think developers stop it much.
Yeah. Can you put an asterisk by the zone?
I think the optimistic perspective would be, hey, the neighborhood plan says MDR.
Yeah.
Therefore...
Okay.
And incidentally, and this may have already been looked at for me, uh, I'd hate to see the properties involved in the zone change develop incrementally one by one, just because of how they're configured and that sort of thing. You know, individual access is out onto State Street versus some kind of internal street system that's gonna work a little bit differently. And I don't know what we can do to, to try to compel that as development proposals come forward, but that's, I think, important.
Yes.
I, I, I would just make a comment in regards to comparing what we're doing here with the property to the south. There's a difference in that, as the neighborhood chair pointed out, the property to the south, where there's the, the big conflict that we went through, what was it, a year ago? That property started off conforming to Provo City ordinances and so forth. And as the, the chair stated, it worked, but then they changed it. They, 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 they changed to violate the ordinances and so forth. Whereas Pro Steel is here now. Everyone knows what it is. If you, if you build a house just to the south of, of Pro Steel, you know going in what you're moving into, what you, who, what your neighbor is. It's not that your neighbor is going to change. So I don't think this is, I don't think it's valid to compare this to the problems that we have in that area to the south.
Okay, thank you. Let's take a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. I will now look for a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.